If we can all take our seats, please. Ready to start our meeting?
He went over to Jurello's.
Huh?
He went over to Jurello's.
Okay.
Well, I don't know.
All right, if I could have your attention, please? Hello? Let's take our seats. Take our seats, please. All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming to our meeting. This is our last meeting before the summer, so it's a little lengthy, but all good things on our agenda tonight. And we're all proud to have you here. Before we start, we have a little sadness in our community. We have one of our brothers died recently, Paul Jurello. Paul Jurello was everything but a commissioner in our city. He was the greatest. Unfortunately, he just passed away yesterday. So I'd like to read, "It is with deep sadness and a heavy heart that I inform you of the passing of longtime resident and friend, Paul Jurello." Paul passed away on Friday, June 16th. He was 76 years old. Paul was a very active member of our community, serving on numerous boards and committees. At the time of his passing, Paul was completing his 18th year on the city's planning and zoning board, serving as a chair of the city's charter review board and serving on the Broward Metropolitan Planning Organization's Citizens Advisory Committee on behalf of the city. Paul was the past president of the Pembroke Lakes Optimists and Pembroke Lakes Homeowners Association. He was also an active member of St. Maxine and Colby Catholic Church. He will be greatly missed. Can we borrow our heads, please?
Mayor, if I may?
Can we borrow our heads for a moment's silence, please? Thank you. Commissioner?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you for the kind words about Paul Jurello. A couple of the things, Paul served on our Board of Adjustment and he also served on our Housing Board, Affordable Housing Board. Just shy, 12 years ago, the day after I was elected, there were three people that I needed to see. The first person I saw was City Manager Charlie Dodge. The second person I went to was Police Chief Dan Giestino. And the third was Paul Jurello. Paul was one of my closest advisors and friends. Paul has my appointee on the planning and zoning board. You know, Mayor, when you have conversations with people and it doesn't matter how many years ago it is, it's just vivid in your mind. Sitting in Paul's home, and I told him, I said, "Listen, Paul, I want you to continue on the planning and zoning board, but I have one request." I said, "I want you to be an independent thinker. I'm not going to tell you how to vote. You vote it up or vote it down based upon your conscience and the facts that's in front of you. I'll let you know if the committee has any concerns," or that sort of thing. I also told him to run Pembroke Lakes, just as he's been doing, because I can't do this job without him. Mayor, Paul loved the community. He cared deeply about Pembroke Pines. There are, as time passes, there's very few people who remember Pembroke Pines the way we do, Mayor. When Flamingo Road didn't have a guard rail, when Palm Avenue was only two lanes, when there was a canal on the east side of Palm Avenue, Paul was there for all of that. His greatest, I appointed him to our Charter Review Board and he was elected as chair. And he's been guiding this committee. It's, our charter, folks, is our city's constitution. And we'll have, sometime next year, Commission will have an opportunity to place things on the ballot for you to consider. Paul took the position as chair without question the most important thing he ever had to do because he knew that whatever came out of that committee is going to be generational for the future of our city. And City Clerk Graham, thank you for all the support you've given Paul throughout the years with anything that he needed. He cared deeply for you and he is certainly going to be missed. So, Mayor, thank you so much for giving me a few minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner, very nice. Okay, any further comments? All right, let's get down with our Robin Bartman.
Mr. Mayor, if you will.
Who's that?
It's your city attorney. Would you kindly let the clerk take role? And we have a public hearing item that's been pre-advertised. It's required to be given, if you wouldn't mind.
Before we do the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, City Clerk, do the role, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Here.
Commissioner Good?
I am here.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
I'm here.
Mayor Ordus?
Here.
City Manager Dodge?
Here.
City Attorney Goran?
I'm here.
We have a call.
Vice Mayor, please lead us in pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Senator, a roll call, roll call, please.
We did. Mr. Mayor, if I can reach the record, the public hearing item, which is published in...
Go ahead.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, for the minor interruption. This is a public hearing required by state law. It's a public hearing regarding that the purpose of the public hearing is to receive public comment on the city's action plan for the community development block grant program. That's the CDBG program for year 2023 and the adoption of proposed resolution number 2023 R-15 with reasons as follows and appears as item number 33 on the regular agenda. Agenda. The proposed resolution 2023 R-15 is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving the city's action plan for community development block grant program year 2023. That's the CDBG program, directing the city manager to submit the action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, including any amendments thereto, and authorizing the city manager to execute all required documents, providing for conflict avoidance and accessibility, providing for effective date, public hearing, mayor and commission. For the purpose of the record, you may open and close to the extent possible. The item will then be considered as item number 33 on the regular agenda. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Public hearing. Anybody from the audience want to speak? Hearing now and closing of public hearing? Let's get out of our meeting, sir?
Back to you, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. All right, Robin Bartman, Representative Robin Bartman. I know you want to give us a, yes, go ahead. I know you want to give us a, I know you want to give us a presentation. I know you have another place to go as well. But I just wanted to add, every place we've been, ribbon-cutting, you've been there. You have really reached out in your capacity to represent us and we're proud of it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And I am very proud to represent the city. I can't think of a more dedicated mayor and commissioners. You guys are wonderful and you truly, this is a hometown here. I'm going to be very brief tonight because you're honoring someone I grew up with, buddy. So, listening since I was a little girl, so I'll be very quick. Just a couple of quick announcements. July 18th, from 10 to 12, we will have the Alzheimer's Bus at Century Village. Please be sure to come by. It's full of resources. It's not just for people who are afflicted with the disease, but also for their family members and caregivers who need tremendous support. So come out to Century Village Clubhouse between 10 and 12 and you'll see the Alzheimer's Bus on July 18th. We had a great turnout with the Florida DMV. Pembroke Pine residents actually got to come to City Hall and take care of their driver's license. It was a packed house. We ran out of appointments, so we're going to be bringing that back definitely. So that was excellent for everyone out there listening. I voted against the insurance bill this session because it wasn't going to do anything to help the consumer. I know you're hurting. I know many of you cannot afford your insurance. I know many of you are having to sell your homes. Please be sure to call my office or call me directly so that we can assist you and get you in touch with the insurance commission to look at your rates or if you're being denied coverage. My personal cell phone, you can rewind this later, or just Google Robin Bartman and you will find my information so that we can help you. We passed the largest budget in state's history at $117 billion, which includes a 5% raise for state employees. And I'm very proud that the state of law enforcement officers and first responders can now retire at 25 years. A couple of years ago, they changed that to 30 years. Pembroke Pines, you did not do that. So your officers retired when they should retire and a certain class of first responders had to stay 30 years before they could have been entered or dropped. So I was happy to help correspond with that bill. I passed four bills this session. I'm only going to talk about one because of time, and that's Kid Care. It's sitting on the governor's desk now. That is my legacy bill. I worked on it for three years. Kid Care is insurance for working families who fall below, 200% below the federal poverty level. What happens to these families is they pay $20 a month for all their kids to get health, vision, dental, and mental health insurance. And then if they make one penny more, if they get a quarter an hour raise, the benefits are roughly taken from them. It goes to $259 per child, which is 1100% increase. It hurts working families. It disincentivizes them from prospering. And the most important thing is their children's health. Especially if you have a child with diabetes, you're going to not take that raise so you can keep that health insurance. So it was a bipartisan bill. It passed unanimously through the House and the Senate. It was a speaker priority. We have now changed the requirement to 300% above the poverty level. It's changing the tiers. People will pay more as they make more. And when they get to the end of the program, it will mitigate the fiscal cliff and they will be able just to afford insurance for their children along with all of their expenses. People are struggling. They can't put food on the table, lunch over their heads, and we want to keep children healthy. So to me, this is the biggest piece of legislation I've ever passed in my life. I have Speaker Paulina, who made this a priority. And so that's all I'm going to say for today because we are here to honor somebody who has done more for this community than anyone I know, buddy. And thank you so much. And I'm glad I could be here tonight to congratulate you. Thank you. I can't deny that you guys are honoring him tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Representative. Questions, Representative? Good job. All right, we now have, is Elaine Blatner here? Yeah, come on up. Bring your whole BCT people up. How are you tonight?
Hi. Good evening. My name is Elaine Blatner. I'm with a consultant working with Broward County Transit, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners, city manager. Actually, I am here to just present the speaker, who is the general manager of Broward County Transit, Corey Koff-Lonergan, who will be making the presentation.
All right. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Curtis, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. I'm so happy to be here with you this evening.
We're happy to have you here.
I'm here to talk about something that's really exciting that's coming to Broward County. And I'm here to talk about the Primo Plan. And basically, I think you've heard iterations of it before, but this is kind of where we are in the process and we're working toward the finalization of actually going forward with implementation. And the strategy basically is to provide a countywide network of premium service. The goals are to improve mobility for all, to make sure we integrate and serve all the communities that are reflected here in the county, implement equitable solutions, be good environmental stewards, and enhance economic development. What we're gaining here, and I know we're tight for time, so I'm going to run through this very quickly. We're gaining over 200 miles of new premium service. We're going to have about 23 million annual ridership on those lines. We're expecting to have a fleet of 100% electric buses.
Yay!
We're going to have, yay, right?
Yay!
Thank you. We have new intelligent transportation systems that are going to be on our roads. And, you know, we recognize that we want to be good neighbors and that we want to be as seamless as possible in the community. And so we want facilities that reflect the aesthetic character of the cities and municipalities and communities we'll be running through. Bottom line is we're trying to connect our major economic engines here in the county, in particular, the airport, seaport, and the convention center. What's great about this type of program is that according to the American Public Transportation Association, they're the organization that is our trade association. And they estimate when you invest about $1 billion in transit projects over the life of the project or over the life of the asset, you probably have about 49,000 jobs. And so we know that this is going to bring new jobs to Broward County. We also know that it will be a catalyst for economic development because that's been proven around the country when these types of investments are made. And it'll be a foundation also for TOD, Transit Oriented Development. Looking forward to having walkable communities with transit that serves them. And then it'll be a great opportunity for the small businesses here in Broward County to be a part of this process. And so, bottom line is, this is data-driven. We have what's called a stops model, which is used in the industry to predict what the ridership levels will be. We are governed by the Federal Transit Administration. And they are... Okay, there's a dog. They are our governing agency, but they're also a strong supporter in terms of providing grants and funding. And so we want to use the kind of tools that they recognize and appreciate. And we've had a lot of community involvement as well. But, so the modes that we're going to have are four as part of this premium service. The first one is commuter rail. The second one is light rail, rapid transit, which is kind of like a trolley. And I jokingly and affectionately remind people of Mr. Rogers. You know, the trolley and Mr. Rogers. It's not that same thing. It's kind of that same concept. But that's what we're going to have as well. And then we have bus rapid transit, which is essentially a bus service that stops at certain locations and is a very, it's a special articulated bus. And then we have our high-frequency services, essentially more buses. And so, as you can see from this chart, you can carry more people on the larger trains because there's more capacity. The frequency for our trains will be 30 minutes during peak periods. And then the high-frequency service doesn't have the same capacity level so you can't carry as many people, but we can have frequency as quickly as 15 minutes. And then the costs are reflected here in terms of incrementally how much it costs more per service. The thing that's important here to note is that because we are going to be operating our commuter rail on the Florida East Coast Corridor, which is an existing rail corridor that Bright Line currently operates on, we don't have to buy property and we don't have to build all that infrastructure. We just have to augment it. So there'll be some cost savings as a result of that. However, with our light rail, that's going to be greenfield, so to speak, and so the costs are a lot more. So here's how it pans out. The commuter rail is about 11.5 miles. Light rail transit will be 23 miles. Bus rapid transit, we're looking at 76 miles. And the high-frequency service is the 100 miles. And so what just popped up on the scene here on the screen are existing parking rite lots that service, our express service to Miami. And then on top of that is the Primo Plan. So the green is the high-frequency bus service. The blue is the bus rapid transit. And the pink is the light rail service. And as you can see, the light rail service starts at the airport and then heads toward the seaport, convention center, and then through Fort Lauderdale, down Broward Boulevard, up State Route 7, and then west towards Sawgrass Mills Mall. And the commuter rail line, the first leg of that will be the Broward County commuter rail south. And then eventually, once we figure out how to get across the river, we'll head north. Okay, there's just stuff that's coming. Okay, there's just stuff that's coming. This is what I just talked about in terms of the light rail. This is just a blowout of that. This is the University Boulevard. And to talk through the implementation very quickly, the first service that we're anticipating implementing is the high-frequency corridors. They are going to be in place by 2036, followed by our commuter rail, which will open in 2027. And then our first BRT, bus rapid transit, light rail lines, will open in 2028. And, you know, the schedule is definitely aggressive. We acknowledge that. And there will be a lot of activity that we need to do in terms of getting designs done, figuring out our service plan, getting the staff up and in place to offload and run these services, getting our environmental documents in order, and, you know, getting all the designs ready. And so this is how it plays out over time for each one of those corridors that I mentioned, starting with commuter rail opening in 2027 and then wrapping in 2038 with the Sunrise Boulevard. And this is what it looks like for our high-frequency service. Sample Road and Hollywood Boulevard starting off, and the last one will be Dixie Highway. And then, I just want to mention a couple of things about program risks. One of the things that we know is that we've had a lot of price volatility. You know, as we all know with our pot, when we go to the store now and we go try to do things and buy things, it costs a lot more than what we had experienced in more recent times. And so we see that playing out in the construction industry too. And it's also a concern in terms of material availability. So that's one of the risks that we're concerned about. We do not own that railroad that we want to run on. And it's owned by the Florida East Coast Railroad, and we don't have a standing agreement with them. And that's something that we have to negotiate, and that is a risk and a cost. And then property acquisition. And I just want to draw your attention to this because some of these facilities, particularly the light rail, we are a bus company. We do have bus maintenance facilities, but we're not a rail company and we don't have those. So we'll have to procure them as well. And we'll have to buy the land to build them and then also build them. So that'll all be new. Okay, so this is a transformational effort, and we believe that this will be good for Broward County. We're delighted to have the opportunity today to speak with you about it. And we look forward to working with you going forward as we move forward with the program. What questions can I answer for you?
Thank you. Very, very, very good. Vice Mayor?
Yes, can you go back a couple of screens where you were showing green lines, blue lines, red lines?
That's the one we showed at the NPO.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
Okay, and keep going, keep going. One of the, Ray, sort of in there maybe. Go up. Here. Okay. While I'm very happy that this is being talked about and actually it's going to happen. It's going to happen somehow, some way, right? Again, I still have to go back, and I know the areas that you're looking at there with the blues and the greens and the yellows need this. But as always, I don't see much that's happening in our area here, southwest Broward. And while perhaps we're not as, at this current time, not as maybe populated as some of the areas that you're looking at where, and business-wise and all that, where people want to get to. We do have people that live out here that do want to get there, and they'd love to be able to use public somehow. So I always am a little, I don't know the exact right word, but would wish that there would be more that would be addressing how we are. We have traffic out here and it needs to go somewhere, and they need to get somewhere. People need to go to work, and a lot of them don't work just around the corner. They work in, you know, more of the downtown Fort Lauderdale areas, south of us areas. So can you speak to that at all?
Yes, ma'am.
As to how, because I don't see that here, and that's a concern.
Yes, so there are, you're right, there's not the premium service here coming here. And I recognize that your community is a very important part of Broward County. And we are going to be doing what's called a comprehensive operational analysis. So our existing fixed route service is going to be evaluated or reevaluated. We're looking at destination, origin, pattern to adjust. So I think that what you'll see in the future will be more service coming this way. Okay, so that's one thing. From a premium service...
When would you think that might?
I don't know until after we do the analysis. So that's a study. It hasn't started yet. But I think the last time we did something like this was seven or eight years ago, and it was a long time. And then we didn't take the O and D information and then adjust, right? Now we can because of the Surtax money. So we can make those adjustments, which is different. The other thing is, is we are bringing some new routes, as shown on this dotted line in this area, if you can see those as well. But if you could just stay tuned, ma'am, I'm hearing what you're saying. But the other thing I just want to say is this is a evolving plan, right? So this isn't it. We recognize that the county is going to change over time, and so this is going to change over time.
I do. I understand that. I just don't want you to forget about us out there.
We're not going to.
Okay.
Other questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Chris Hill.
If you could, could you email us all this presentation?
Yes, sir.
And in that email, could you include either your name and contact or whoever it is that we can call when we have questions about it?
Sure.
Let me ask you, how much will this plan cost?
I'll get to that slide. Oh, my goodness. So I will fast forward ahead. And overall, well, it's not there. It's $4.3 billion for the entire program, over the entire 15 years. And to put that in context, so I am from Washington Metropolitan, I mean, the Womata Service in the DC, New Jersey, North Jersey, I mean, sorry, North Virginia and Maryland. And our annual expense was about $2 billion a year for our capital program. So that's just to put it in context.
Right. And what is the source of funds for this?
So it's a combination of things. So it's Surtax-funded, and it's also, our intent is to seek federal funding. That's why the FTA and using the stops model was so important. So we're using, we're anticipating getting about 50% of it paid for by the grant money and then the other 25% by state DNT money.
I'm also struck by the, at least the initial absence of a presence of this plan in the western, southwestern communities of Broward County. And I'm not going to press you with more questions right now. But if you can send this over, and if you could send me your financial spreadsheet of how this is going to be paid for, the different sources of funds, between those two, I should have, and your contacts for who I can ask questions. Between those, I should be able to formulate my further questions. And I want to thank you for what looks like a very exciting presentation. But I will have some questions for you.
Understood. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. If you go back to the slide that you had for Vice Mayor Siple, please. Your favorite slide. I know it's your favorite slide.
The one that brings the west end?
The one that has everything north of 595.
This one?
That one, yes. So here's an interesting fact about Pembroke Pines. We're the second largest city in the county. And when you add Miramar and Hollywood, our population is bigger than pretty much everybody north of 595. And this community is struggling to get out of their cars. And while you're not here today to defend those who've made colossal mistakes up until this point, the sales tax money wouldn't have passed if it wasn't for Miramar, Hollywood, and Pembroke Pines because of the promises that the City Commission promised us. Yeah? So one of my good friends is actually lead project for the Bright Line. And so I know what's happening along that corridor. There is something interesting about this, and that's, and that's the introduction to, that's missing, is the introduction of drone flight, of flying cars moving people. We have an asset at North Bay Airport that will be a hub for the southern part of our county to get people onto buses out of downtown Miami. We have a really big, thick book that we're going to go through. May want to stick around. You might pick something up out of this, or we can have our plane director send it to you because I think it'll be helpful because we spent a lot of money to know why we are stuck in traffic. And 58% of people surveyed that came to the microbus program said it doesn't matter if we had the buses, we're not getting on them. They don't want to put their kids on a bus. We have another large portion of our population that uses I-75 as the largest corridor, second to the Florida Turnpike. But they're spending between 30 minutes to 60 minutes a day in traffic. So what this study is telling us is people work elsewhere, but they live here. And so we have this blister pack of concern. And when I see a plan coming from the county that falls short of the expectations of the residents, I have to speak out.
Understood.
So this City Commission is here to be supportive and helpful to your needs. So if there is something that you see in our plan that you can connect with your plan that can make things faster, I'm all for it. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I would love to see your plan. I can't stay, but I do, I will follow up.
We'll email it to you.
Yeah, okay. Got emailing going.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to say thank you for making the presentation. Obviously, transportation in Broward County is a very heavy lift, and it's on your shoulders. And appreciate you being here for that. So I just want to just, you know, along with my colleague's comments, just add, you know, what's interesting for me is what percent of the Surtax dollars are being utilized for, this is the Primo Program. Is that what this is? So that would be an interest for me first on this subject matter. Secondly, is that later on tonight, we're going to be hearing from our consultants, I'm assuming, regarding our own city transportation master plan. And one of those components included mass transportation. And from what I reviewed of that document, it seemed like there was, there's potentially a deficiency of mass transportation in certain areas of the city that I think would benefit from having that service available. And so as my colleague had asked, you know, so you're going to provide us with your contact and things like that? I'm assuming it's your office. If we have questions about how to, how does this city generate a request or move forward with enhancing some of the mass transportation solutions within our city, I'm assuming it's through your office?
Yes, it is, sir. And, you know, to be, so I'm going to be transparent. I'm like 100 and maybe 30 days on the job. So this is my first time here. You've got a lovely city.
And you super team who? Who is that?
But I don't know what the past was, but what I want to commit to you is that I feel very strongly about us having a collaboration because we all win when we get it right. And so I really do want to have an opportunity to work with you on it.
And we... Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Thank you. And we know that you know that transportation doesn't stop at sunrise. Comes a little further.
Comes a little further, sir.
I think anything else?
But you will want to know that information to all of us, correct? Yes, we got it.
Anything else?
I'm here with the team. They're on it.
Great presentation.
If I may, if I may, ask the Speaker her name again for the record?
Oh, sure. Sorry. Cory, C-O-R-E-E, Cuff, C-U-F-F, Lonergan, L-O-N-E-R-G-A-N. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good evening. Hello? Hello? Well, thank you for all being here. We have a special presentation tonight that I want to present to this very special person in our community. And while I do this, I want to have my wife Barbara come up, the First Lady, who's a board member, to read something of her own. Barbara?
Good evening, everyone. And to the Commission, thank you for allowing me this opportunity. I would like to start with a huge thank you to John Cross for allowing me to be part of Your Here's Help family. It has meant so much to me over the last 25 years. Founded in 1969, John Cross has created the best-by-far residential and outpatient substance abuse treatment center for young boys 13 years old and up in need of help. John, since 1969, you constantly improved Here's Help and brought dynamite ideas and turned them into a reality. And by doing so, you turned the lives around for so many individuals that walked through our doors. We're about ready to view a video, but first hubby gets to talk again. But with this video, you will understand and feel the power which comes from within John Cross, aka Footy Y100, to gain the trust and respect from our boys before setting them off into the real world on a positive note.
Very well. Thank you. In my tenure as Mayor of the great city of Pembroke Pines, I have given out eight keys to the city in 28 years. I'm going to give one tonight. And I'm going to give it to John Footy Cross. For 32 years, John Cross was known to South Florida radio listeners as Footy, one of the most popular and beloved on-air personalities and radio show hosts in our community. But he is so much more. Through many events, such as Footy's Y100 wingding, where we did it the first one east, he has helped many in our community, from children to the elderly, but most especially with his involvement with Here's Help, a program established in 1968 that helps adolescents ages 13 and older and adults with substance abuse addictions. John is Here's Help, CEO and a Board of Directors member who has been directly involved in the development of the agency for 55 years, utilizing his notoriety as an air personality to promote and improve services at the agency. John understood the trials and challenges facing those who are addicted, as he himself battled this in his late teens. He sought treatment, moved from New York to South Florida, and attended Florida International University, where he received a bachelor's degree in social work and then later a master's degree in human resources from St. Thomas University. The city of Pembroke Pines is honored today to present John Footy Cross as a key to our city for all the yes contributors to our community. His years of service and for dedication and commitment to helping those who are struggling with substance abuse addiction. Want to help? You want to help? Susan, you want to help?
Thank you, Frank. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
My wife, Susan. Frank actually gave her the key, you know, so that she could still live with me for a little while longer. Best thing that I ever did in my life, and I did a lot of things, was to move to Pembroke Pines. I came back in '69, '70, and never left. Took me a while to get the pool, but it took a while. And I've always been very proud of being in and from Pembroke Pines. And I think it's a special city, special people, great schools, great ball fields. I spent with my two sons on all the ball fields, as I'm sure most of you have. And I always had a very... I used to have to drive to Hollywood, and I used to say, can't we move this to Pembroke Pines? We gotta have this microphone here? But it worked out, and we all did, and had a good job. There's a lot of Y One Hundred people still here. If you all raise your hands. Dave Lorenzo, everybody. And Ignacio Mendez came all the way up from Hialeah. But anyway, we have a lot of good people, and we met a lot of good people, we did a lot of good things, we hope, and Frank's been a great mayor. Barbara, I'll go to the grave with Barbara, I love her to death. She, you probably don't know this, but Barbara spends time down at Here's Help, working with the young men that we have at the school, and she, she doesn't get the medal she deserves. Well, you can have mine. Anyway, Pembroke Pines is a great city, best thing I did was moving, I never left, I'm still here, and, but I gotta get the pool cleaned a little more often than, anyway. And Y One Hundred, of course, was the monster of the world, and we, people think that we did the first one in Hollywood, in the circle. Incorrect. We did the first one in the shopping center right off, huh? University and Pines. We did the first one there. We almost got arrested for breaking all the rules. But the, the mayor chased the cops away, so we, we managed to do it, and we had a good time, and we went on to a lot of other things. And, again, a lot of great friends that are still here, and I appreciate, Rixie, what are you doing?
He's in the hallway here.
Yeah. He's been there for forty-five years. Oh, wait, wait, one, one quick one. Jeff Nelson is here tonight.
Hey.
That guy took me to Australia, okay? We almost didn't get out alive.
Don't tell us you weren't, Footy.
Yeah, I know. We had a good time, and of course, Dave Lorenzo, Dave, the best. And I want to get something to eat, if I can. My wife's telling me, she said, oh, Barbara.
One thing that we want to mention, Kim Zacco. Sammy, God rest his soul, he was our right hand to Footy. Unfortunately, we lost our Sammy Zacco, but he's, he's here, he's here looking down.
Thank you, Barbara, I appreciate it. Well, I'm going to let all of you go, because I'm hungry. Anyway, thank you very much, thank you for having Pembroke Pines, thank you for letting me live here, and I'm going to continue on and on and on. That's a photo. We're going to have, yeah, let's take a, commission, you want to come down, we'll take a picture, and then we're going to show a short video.
You're going to tell him that he tripped and fell.
I don't know. Can you hold that? Get the commission down here, we'll do a photo. Okay, everybody come on over. What, are you going to be taking this picture?
Take it out, watch it.
All right, thank you all. We're going to have a short photo. Please play the video.
Was it in an apartment?
Okay, we have your video, Footy.
Typical Hispanic family struggling. That was a little tough, you know, because everybody around you, all you, you know, had to fight, you know, being gangs, and especially drugs, you know? My dad, we just like, we weren't close at all, like, he would work all day, and when he'd get home, I just would talk to him, I just, we really mean to him when I was a kid. Growing up, I, I kind of took everything for granted, and I didn't really like, see like, how well we were, how well off we were. I was attracted to like.
Can you play that a little louder?
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was cool. There was a lot of like, I hope it's right after high school, a couple of my buddies, they got into that, and it actually passed away. My dad went to prison when I was very young, went away for thirteen years for doing human trafficking. Growing up, it was really rough. I got involved. Started hanging out with my older cousins, that they were already in a gang. As soon as I knew it, I was already being part of everything. When I was already like fourteen, fifteen, I'd already been stabbed twice. I've been, I've gotten my head broken a bunch of times. I've been arrested a lot of times as a juvenile. I was playing both sports, I was a star athlete, so I started using cocaine, I started drinking a lot. Marijuana was always there since I was younger, I started selling it. I got kicked out of school because they found, they found a gun clip in, in my locker and in ounces of marijuana. And this was my junior year, when I already had two scholarships, one for Saint Thomas and one for FAU. I'd lost my scholarships, and I was still addicted to drugs. The defining moment when I realized was when I got shot. It was two cops, while they were shooting at me, I ended up getting hit, my little brother lost a thumb, and we all got arrested. I spent about six months in jail. Yeah, that's when it really, that's when it really opened my eyes, at least I thought it did. I was completely out of control, like I had like no grasp of my life. After high school, I started selling bigger amount, and I actually started selling harder drugs. And then I started selling coke, cocaine, and that led to me starting doing cocaine. I lost my house, I lost my car, I lost my girlfriend, I ended up overdosing. After overdose, I had nowhere to go, my parents said, if you go to rehab, I could let you stay back at my house. Actually, no, that led here, at Here's Help.
Our motto is recovery through education. We, we believe in simple terms, you can't just stop something, you got to do something else. So what we do is we help them catch up, and we help them provide the new life, something else. We speak the language, so to speak. This, this is not the glee club.
At first, I did not want to be here. But after two weeks of sobering up, and the counseling, and the other kids are going through the same problem, I was like, maybe, maybe I'll change. Here's Help is making or breaking for me right now.
Do you think you're in the right place?
Do I think I'm in the right place? I definitely do. It's actually helped me a lot.
At Here's Help, we have a holistic approach, because we're not just addressing the addiction, but we're addressing the whole person. We're offering not just the traditional substance abuse education, but we're giving young men an opportunity to really see what they have not been working on and developing.
I'm getting my GED here, it's actually pretty great, my GED teacher's awesome.
We have a Dade County High School on the grounds, we have our own GED program.
We find that when they're introduced to music and art and science and photography, these things, they really do develop, and they develop a self-confidence that allows them to want to do more.
I found photography while I've been in here, which has been really, really cool. I have a great teacher, Lang, he's awesome. He shows us like all types of stuff, photography. Three months into the program, I was doing culinary, I was, I was good at cooking, I liked it, I love eating, I love cooking food, it's like an art to me. Chef, she always has our task with the bake, which everybody has their specific task of something they have to do, which are their chores, their, their chores.
We have a culinary program, which was started by the great Pepe Bedia, Bedia Spices, and public supermarkets. They get their food handlers license, their food managers license, and then they can get rapidly into the workforce and get busy. There's no exempt population. Drugs and alcohol from the White House to the outhouse. There, you can't stop it, it's everywhere.
Put in the horticulture agriculture program, and I ended up falling in love with it. We learned a lot about large-scale agriculture, small-scale permaculture, with the things that we have in the garden and whatnot. These are the strawberries here, we planted them about a month and a half ago. Had I not been here in Here's Help, I could have been dead, robbed, broke on the street. So I'm glad that I came here, and like, like, ever since I, I've come here, I've realized like so many of the things that I've done wrong when I was in Austin, I've apologized to all the people that I've hurt, and told them how I'm going to do better, so that's kind of like helped me spiritually and, and physically too, just being in here. When I got out of here, I wanted to start college, and I wanted to start studying bioengineering, and I want to see where life takes me from there.
Are you donating here to Here's Help? You're saving these boys' lives, and you may also be saving someone in your own family that needs help. If I could help one of these boys here, it's a home run, it's a home run for me.
Without Here's Help, I would have been on the streets, homeless, probably in jail, or probably another overdose and died. I would have been dead. Here's Help definitely saved my life. I'm holding back my tears right now, but. thank you for really saving my life. Without you, I wouldn't be here.
Thank you, and thank you to Here's Help. We now have a special birthday presentation. Is Alice Mans Brancock here? No, no, a hundred-year-old birthday.
A hundred.
What?
On the floor.
Wow, come on down. Look at this. If I could look like you at a hundred?
We're like, get up.
That's okay, I can't get up most of the time, that's all right. Her hundredth birthday in July. The city's happy to give you a proclamation on your birthday.
Thank you.
Whereas Alice Mans Brancock was born on July fourth, twenty-twenty-three, in College Point, Long Island, to Jane Jenny Graham and Floyd Newton Mans. And whereas Alice graduated from Woodbridge High School and attended college for one year. And whereas Alice's first marriage was to James William Snyder, they met at a dance camp in Kilman, New Jersey, and they had a son named Graham William Snyder. And whereas Alice moves to Florida in nineteen fifty-three, and met her second husband, William Brancock, at the West Hollywood Bowling Alley, owned by Rocky Marciano in nineteen fifty-nine, where Alice worked part-time to make extra money. Alice helped William raise his three children, Victoria, Bush, and Kim, as if they were her own. And whereas Alice met her third husband, Frank Rossi, on a blind date that her, that her stepdaughter Victoria set up. Frank had no interest in dating, but took one look at Alice from afar, and liked what he saw. They danced the night away at a dance at Marina Bay, Fort Lauderdale. Alice and Frank had thirty-five wonderful years together before he passed on twenty-eleven. And whereas Alice worked for Prudential Insurance as a clerk for four years in New Jersey, Bell Telephone as a switcher operator for two years in Ashbury Park in Jersey, and Ector Drugs, where she started part-time for six months, and then full-time as the cognicetic supervisor for twenty years. This was her dream job. She accompanied car and supervised twenty-three stores from Broward to Delray. And whereas through her life, Alice enjoyed reading, dancing, ice skating, and roller skating, and swimming. Her family describes Alice as strong, smart, with a great sense of humor. We could see that. She is always happy, very positive.
Always there.
Always have confidence in her abilities, and was able to step into any job, and was be completely proficient. Whereas Alice's family is one hundred loving wishes and celebration and tribute to her hundredth birthday. You've shared what you learned about living long through the kindness that you've shown. You've seen many dreams and wishes come true, and felt joy in the friendships you've known. You've earned the right to this moment, to observe and to celebrate, to for stands a wonderful tribute to your remarkable life and you. Now therefore, I, Frank Seortis, mayor of the great city of Pembroke Pines, along with the city commission, to hereby deem it an honor and pleasure to present this proclamation, Alice Mans Brancock, on occasion of her hundredth birthday, with sincere congratulations and best wishes.
Thank you very much.
Got to take a picture.
Yeah.
There we go. Did you want to say something, Alice?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
And I've enjoyed, I came here in nineteen seventy-three, and I enjoyed it immensely, and I'm still enjoying it.
Thank you so much, thank you, Alice. Okay, couple more presentations. This is a certificate of recognition to Merkin Offlu. Are you here? Yes, please. There's Merkin. Congratulations. Vice Mayor, you coming? Come on.
I am, I am.
The city of Pembroke Pines is proud to recognize and congratulate Merkin Offlu, a Pembroke Pines resident and fifth grade student at Pembroke Pines Charter East Elementary, for winning the Greater Fort Lauderdale Sister Cities Inc. and Florida Turkish American Association's twenty-twenty-three If Our Mayor competition. All right. If I were mayor, I would want a fair world for everyone, especially for the homeless, the people who need, children, and the environment for a better future. As mayor, I would make more cultural clubs at schools, all children deserve equality, and making these clubs will help kids feel like they belong. Diversity is very important, no child should feel left out because of their culture or religion. To continue being mayor, I would allocate a big percentage of taxes to the homeless and animal shelters. Our budget's up. Helping those in need is very important, that's why supporting the homeless and animal shelters creates a big impact for those struggling to survive. If I were mayor, I would get every house solar panels for a cleaner and greener environment. It's good. If every house had solar panels, the earth would be a safer place to live. Solar panels get energy from the sun, which is an renewable source. This way, everybody could have a healthier life. In conclusion, I'm thinking big and dreaming bigger. I want equality for everyone, no matter who they are and where they are from. All living species deserve the best life, and my city, they'll get what they demand. If you want something done, I'm the right one. Merkin's parents are rigid for Turkey. Her mother, Deary Offlu, was the first female to attend, to attend university, study ongoing marine engineering. ongoing marine engineering, and face skepticism because she was a female. Despite all odds, she earned the degree. It appears that Merkin is already following in her footsteps, and we're excited to see what the future will leave. Congratulations.
Can, can, uh, can your parents come down, please? Parents come down? Mayor, I was at, I was at the, um, I was at the East Charter for, I believe it was for an honor roll. Uh, and this young lady, of course, was getting, getting an honor roll, but then when they were... But, but during that conversation, we were talking about this essay contest, and I thought, Mayor, you'd like to, like to see what our young folks think about if they were a mayor. And I think they're pretty right on with a lot of, went right, right on with a lot of, lot of really good stuff. But, um, I think also, while, obviously, as a fifth, this is a fifth grader, folks, that we're talking about here, okay, that has done all this, taller than the mayor here. But, but if you listen to what her words were in this, you will see that she is well beyond a fifth grader in, in how she feels and what she, what she wants to do. But, you know, our teachers and our principals and our schools do wonderful things with our children and, and challenge them all the time, but the parents set examples and, and want to be, you know, that leader in the family on doing it. So I think it's important, again, I just want to repeat this very quickly. Marson's mother, Mrs. Oflu, had, had been invited to our career day for the past two years to share her inspirational journey into becoming one of the first ocean-going chief engineers for Turkey.
For Europe.
For Europe, excuse me, for Europe, not just Turkey, for Europe. Okay, okay, okay. She was the first female to attend university to study ocean-going marine engineering and faced skepticism because she was a female. Despite the odds, Ms. Oflu earned her degree and worked onboard a ship for many years. She is currently the co-founder and technical manager of Domer Trade in Fort Lauderdale, Florida. So the reason I say that is, um, here we have a young lady, who obviously is well on her way to being something very, very special for us, but good examples. And we can't say enough about what her parents do and the, and the examples they set for us and what they challenge our children to do. And so we are very, very help, very, very grateful for what you've done. And this is a Pembroke Pine student, folks, and we're really, really proud of that. So, thank you.
Uh, thanks, thank you for everything. Yeah, I am so proud of her, first of all. And she, also, she is the first baby engineer, I can say, um, in the, in the world, who sails with her, with, uh, her family for four years internationally. Yeah. From one-year-old to five. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all. Thank you. All right. Our final presentation is for Pride Month. Can I have somebody come down? There he is. The city always recognizes Pride Month. And this year, we want to give a proclamation, LGBTQ Pride Month. Okay, yeah. There we go. Let me move over here where it's clear. Whereas the City of Pembroke Pines cherishes the value and dignity of each person and appreciates the importance of equality and freedom. And whereas all are welcome in the City of Pembroke Pines to live, work, play, and every family, and any shape deserves a place to call home where they are safe, happy, and supported by friends and neighbors. And whereas the City of Pembroke Pines denounces prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, gender identity, gender expression, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical attributes as an, as an affront to our fundamental principles. And whereas Pride Month began in June of 1969, on the one-year anniversary of the Stonewall uprising from New York City, after LGBTQ and allied friends rose up and fought against the constant police harassment and discriminatory laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas the City of Pembroke Pines appreciates the culture, civic, and economic contributions of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, plus LGBTQ community, which strengthen our social welfare. And whereas it imperative that young people in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers and community leaders. And whereas despite being marginalized LGBTQ, people continue to celebrate authenticity, acceptance, and love. Now therefore, I Frank Seoris, by the authority of investing as mayor of the City of Pembroke Pines, on behalf of the City Commission, to hereby proclaim the month of June 2023 as LGBTQ Pride Month. And the City of Pembroke Pines and its residents to recognize the contributions made by members of the LGBTQ community and to actively promote the principles of equality, liberty, and justice. Congratulations. On behalf of Todd Delme, the President of Delphin Democrats, and the LGBTQ Council, I want to thank you, Mayor. I also want to give special thanks to Iris Siple, Jay Schwartz, Thomas Gooden, and Commissioner Castillo, and Commissioner Stilwell for sponsoring this. You know what? It's easy to give this award when things are easy. But to give it this year shows a mark of courage and bravery. Because today, the LGBT community is often being used in a political game of pawn, and reality TV. How outrageous can we be? And I feel really honored, as Tom Lander, I'm Safe's Chairperson of Safe Schools, South Florida, accepting this in the City of Pembroke Pines, and I'm going to tell you why. 1992, at the age of 38, wasn't it until 38 I decided I needed to do something about my life? And I couldn't go to therapy anymore not to be gay. It just wasn't working. So I got on my bicycle here in South Florida and bicycled for 21 days by myself, from Pembroke Pines to New York City. And during that time, I came to the realization between me and my God that I was okay. And so that journey started here in Pembroke Pines just, what is that, 20, 30, 31 years ago. And so, City of Pembroke Pines, thank you for this honor to the LGBT community. God bless each and every one of you. I mean that from the bottom of my heart. All right. How are you?
No items, ma'am.
Did you take the, Mountide to be both the agenda?
No items, ma'am.
Request of the public?
There's an item at the request of the public. Miss Melissa Gomez would like to speak.
Okay, you have three minutes. You have to push that button there to speak. There you go.
Good evening, ma'am, gentlemen. My name is Melissa Gomez. I live at 5511 Southwest 1989th Avenue. Um, last, a couple of weeks ago, I recently received a letter from the City Manager informing us the gate at 54th Place and 207th Avenue, by Franklin Academy will remain open due to a court order. And although I was not a resident at the time Franklin Academy was built, I had been told by many of the residents that when Franklin Academy was given the right to build and open the school, our community was assured and promised that our streets would be protected from increased school traffic. I understand and recognize that the city has attempted to do that. But with this new court order, I would like to know what the city will do to maintain that promise. As shown during the transportation presentation and the questions this commission asked the presenter, you can understand that it's frustrating to be promised something and not get it or feel overlooked or forgotten about. I hope that's not the case for my community in this situation. At the community meeting that was hosted by Commissioner Siple several months ago, there was discussion about several options that could be taken if the city were forced to leave the gates open. Would it be possible to schedule another meeting or send us an update as far as what the city intends to do to protect my neighborhood from increased traffic flow, especially when the school begins in the fall, and families from points south of Franklin Academy will likely use my street to access the school? I am most concerned because my own children, who attend public school, normally walk to the bus stop on 202nd Avenue. I feel that it would be unsafe for them to do so if there is an increase in the morning and afternoon traffic. Additionally, increased traffic in the neighborhood decreases our quality of life with increased noise, increased exposure to crime. I know that when I bought my home two years ago, that I bought a house on a nice, quiet street and not one with a lot of school traffic that felt safe. One idea that was mentioned during the community meeting was that, um, that we could close the street completely at the place where the gate currently sits. I think this is the most cost-effective and expedient way to manage this problem. Of course, it will cause inconvenience for us to go to Weston, but honestly, I do most of my shopping in areas in Pembroke Pines anyways. And I'm sure most people do. This would increase the time that it takes to reach my children's assigned elementary school and their activities in Weston, but I would prefer that inconvenience over decreased safety and increased traffic. Alternatively, or in addition to other solutions, I would also like to see sidewalks as, be put into place so that our children have a safe way to navigate the neighborhood without having to walk on the street. We are one of the only communities in Pembroke Pines that does not have sidewalks. I know not everybody in this community or my community will be in favor of sidewalks, but there have already been accidents and close calls, and we all deserve a safe place to walk and recreate within our neighborhood. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I look forward to hearing what the City of Pembroke Pines intends to do to address this issue.
Thank you. As you heard, we are very concerned about traffic in our city and trying to do whatever we can to alleviate it. And your point is well-taken. City Manager has your, your speech, and will make sure we work toward an end for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Yes, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
No, I, I just wanted to tell, um, to tell Ms. Gomez that we, we hear what you're saying, and we've been having, where there have been discussions about how we, how, what can proceed, and how and who needs to be involved in the procedure. So I'm sure that when it gets to that point, you all will be brought in, and you'll know more about how the discussions are going and what can be done. So, but we hear you. We definitely hear you.
Okay. Commissioner Order Report. How about Board of Adjustment?
None, ma'am.
Announce the board and committee appointments?
There are none.
All right, I have a consent agenda, 1 through 29. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner.
Uh, yeah, I have, uh, item number 22.
22. The Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor?
Hold on. Commissioner Vasile?
I believe that item 3 and 19 are going to be read as part of the regular agenda. Is that correct?
City Attorney, is that correct? Three and 19 together. I don't think that's...
If I may, Mayor, to the Commissioner, 19 is under the quasi-judicial consent item. Unless it's pulled off consent, it will stay on consent.
So we're, we're voting on 19?
19 is part of quasi-judicial consent under the ordinance, Commissioner, through the mayor, if I, if you will, unless a member of the commission, the ordinance specifically tells us, under section 3714, the applicant, any city commissioner, or any member of the public, may request that an application for development approval be removed from the quasi-judicial consent agenda and accepted as provided for in subsection C below. Such items shall be continued to the quasi-judicial items portion of the meeting, so it would be otherwise on the regular agenda, unless it's been, not been pulled.
All right. So I'd like to, I'd like to pull 19 and put it on quasi-judicial consent.
Regular, regular.
Regular, regular quasi-judicial. And I believe that item 3, Mr. City Manager, has been pulled into the regular agenda?
Yes, Commissioner, that has been placed on the regular agenda.
So when we vote on the consent agenda, we will not be voting on items 3 and 19?
And 22.
And 22. Hold on one second, please.
And 22 is pulled by Commissioner. Oh, good. Correct. For the record, Mayor, Commissioner...
My, uh, all my questions were answered. I have no other polls.
Thank you. No, not yet. Mr. Mealy, what would you like?
Mr. Mealy, please identify yourself with the record and why you're standing on the podium.
My name is Dennis. My name is Dennis Mealy, 200 East Flower Boulevard. And 28 is associated with 19, so I was just going to ask if you were going to pull 19, if you would pull 28 as well.
City Attorney?
That's, 28 could be considered, it is on the, uh, it could also be taken off consent and would be considered along with number, uh, number 19.
Okay.
All right. 19 and 28 would be heard together.
Uh, Mayor?
Who's that?
Ms. Thorson.
Go ahead.
Uh, City Attorney, uh, is it Mr. Mealy's request to pull 28 off our consent?
No, no, 28 and 19 are going to be read together. Correct, City Attorney?
I'm, I'm asking Mr. Mealy if he's asking us to pull 28.
Um, the reason I had asked you to pull 28 is because it's related to 19, and if, you wouldn't want one to pass without the other one passing. So I was hoping if you were going to discuss 19, you could also do 28 at the same time. If you don't have anything to say about 28, I'm fine, but I wouldn't want 28 to pass and 19 not to pass. That's all.
Okay. So, uh, City Attorney, um, uh, 28's, uh, if 28 is not pulled off, off the consent, I, I don't have a reason to pull it. Um, if it would be contingent upon the outcome of 19, am I correct on that?
That's correct.
City Attorney?
Through the mayor to the commission, the answer is yes, unless the applicant feels differently about the request.
Thank you.
And reading?
Oh, I believe, excuse me, all the way, but I need to get the legal guy to tell.
All right. On those consent agendas items that were numbered other than pulled, please, uh, have a roll call, please.
On all items except, Mayor?
And all except the ones that were pulled, which are 9?
I will move.
9, uh, 922, and 19.
I will move in number 22.
All right, there are second, second by the Vice Mayor. Go ahead, Commissioner, uh, Secretary.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Siple?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, item 9.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to award ISB, the number RE-23-01, Drainage Improvements at Silver Lakes Park South to the most responsive responsible bidder, American Forza Construction LLC, in the amount not to exceed 166,635, which includes 21,735 allowance for asphalt resurfacing.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
And I just have a question. I see Ms. Thorson is here, and I just have a, if she could come down, I have a quick question for her.
That was second by Commissioner Schwartz.
Okay.
Christine Thorson, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening.
Hi.
Uh, I just, I, uh, you know, I've spent a lot of time out at the park, and, you know, and I know the drainage has on and off been, been a bit of a problem. My question was, was this not part of, um, of our Parks Master Plan to, is this one of the, because I was reading back through that, and I thought we had discussions about this, but I didn't really see all of it there.
This is, no, this isn't listed in our Parks Master Plan. This is something that I had put into the budget for this year to take care of.
Okay, as a separate item.
As a separate item. It's a maintenance issue.
Okay, cool. Thank you. No problem. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. A discussion on item 9. Call roll, please.
Vice Mayor Siple?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
All right. Well, now on item...
19.
We're on item 22.
19.
19.
19.
19's not on that.
19 and 22.
19's after the, so, City Attorney, I'm confused. I, I got item that was pulled, item 20. We were going to take 19 after the consent, correct?
28 was, was approved on a consent agenda, but it's contingent upon review and consideration by the commission as to the approval item number 19.
But I have item 22 being pulled down. But I have item 22 being pulled out.
That was Commissioner Good's item.
I understand. So I'm going to pull it out, right?
That's your prerogative, Mayor.
All right, Commissioner Good, item 22.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 22 is motion to approve the Sixth Amendment to the contractual service agreement with Compass Group USA, increasing the fixed meal price for charter school lunch by 8.4195% or 29 cents for an actual total impact of $242,000, 227.61 cents for the period of August 1st, 2022 through June 30, 2023.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm just going to reiterate much of the conversation that we had at the last meeting. I find that this is a last-minute request for funds that I don't believe that the city should or needs to pay. I will say that I know that we have a, we had at the last meeting deferred this item so that the auditor may review the item. The auditor did review the item and he provided all of us with a memo. Again, though, but, and there's two particular items in the audit memo that were, have been my issue and still are my issue. One is that, one of the reasons why the request is being made is because the increase in costs of services for employees, minimum wage rates. That minimum wage rate was passed three years ago, so there's plenty of time, the schedule was provided, you know, for, no, all persons who are responsible for in business to increase the minimum wage rates to the schedule that was put out by the state. So, I mean, this is like years ago, and then the second item that I'm particularly concerned about was that the cost information that was provided by Compass was not audited or verified by our auditor. They just provided an overview of the information that we already had, which I already knew, but the request was for them to be able to audit that information, and they were not able to do that. So I will say this, I, I'm not opposed to the company, clearly, because the consent agenda, one of the items included the fact that we were giving them another contract going forward for the next several years should we continue to renew. I find the company to be fine. No issue with the company. I think they provide the services. I just think that this request for additional payment is out of line, and I myself do not find this to be in the best interest of the city, considering the fact that we're going to be talking about some of our budget requests a little bit later on. And so I cannot support this item, however, though I do agree that the company is in good standings with the city. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion?
Sure, Mayor.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Through the manager, Mr. Bonilla.
Good evening, Jonathan Bonilla, Assistant Director of Public Services.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Did you have a chance to review the commission auditor's letter?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything in the letter that gave you pause, concern, or enlightenment?
Not at all, sir.
Certainly, stayed on the record tonight was the increase in labor, but that wasn't the, that wasn't the lion's share of the increase. It happened to eggs and flour and transportation costs that went through the roof during this time period. Is that your understanding?
That is my understanding. It's a component of the various factors. Yes, sir.
And we have internal auditing within the city, correct?
Um, not, uh.
But we internally audit.
We audit the contract, yes.
Okay. And your work and the commission auditor's work may not always align because there may be questions asked on one side or the other that may not come to, um, let me ask this a different way, because I know we have a long agenda, Mayor. The commission auditor, what happens to be here tonight, didn't review Compass's books. What did, what did our internal staff do to review the information?
So what we did is that we received the data that came straight from their financials. We looked at it in detail as we discussed it with the commission auditor. We went through all of our steps that we took, and the same steps, same steps that he took, we took as well. That was their, the data that provided justification. We also did our data comparison. When we did our data comparison, we realized that when you look at CPI and when you look at a contract that was, that has been in place since 2018, and this minimum mandate came in 2020, two years after the fact, we found it to be justified.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bonilla. City Manager, do you have any pause or concern as to why we should not award this motion tonight?
No, I do not.
Thank you, sir.
Further discussion? I call a roll, please.
Commissioner Good? Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cyple?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Item 19, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Commission. For the record, 19 having been pulled from the quasi-judicial consent agenda is an item that reads as follows for the public record. It's a motion to approve the WM Recycling South Florida Site Plan. It's SP 2022-0014 for building height, as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Board located at 20701 Pembroke Road. It has been pulled from the, from the quasi-judicial consent agenda, which would have meant earlier that the item could have been approved by the mayor and commission at a public vote without being considered for a quasi-judicial item. Under the city's code, much like we saw two weeks ago with the HCA site plan, this is a special proceeding under chapter 37 of the city's code of ordinances, which requires the taking of testimony, the providing of competent and substantial evidence, and the consideration by the mayor and commission of those pieces of data and evidence to support the answer and the request for the, for the item before the commission. The applicant, I believe, is here through Dennis Mealy, who is legal counsel for the applicant. There is an option under the code, which is provided for by law, which would allow the applicant to waive the full informal hearing unless the mayor and commission would choose to conduct the hearing in an otherwise full informal fashion. To that extent, Mr. Mealy, you might want to approach the podium, if I may, Mr. Mayor, and inquire on behalf of the mayor and commission whether you would waive the requirement for a quasi, for a full quasi-judicial hearing or otherwise.
Dennis Mealy, 200 East Broward Boulevard, for Lauderdale, on behalf of the applicant, will waive the quasi-judicial procedure.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, may I inquire briefly?
Go ahead.
Mr. Mealy, you have the parent authority under your representation of the applicant to in fact publicly waive their full and fair hearing as otherwise required by the city code.
Well, of course, we want a full and fair hearing, but yes, we'll waive the quasi-judicial procedure.
You'll get a full and fair hearing.
I have authority to do so.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Castillo?
I move, I move to approve item 19.
All right, second by Vice Mayor, discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Thank you. Mr. Mealy, I want to thank you for the time that we've had, you and your client, over the phone, going over, scrubbing the details of this particular facility. I would like you to please put on the record, what is this facility? What will it do? Why are we here? What are you asking of us? And that's the first set of my questions. Then I'll have the second set.
Could I get some help to get the item up on the screen? Thank you. The, the map from the BCT is still up here.
Mr. Mayor, if I may quickly, for the purpose of the record, Mayor and Commission, just for the record, although Mr. Mealy on behalf of his client has waived the formal proceedings, all of the record evidence that was presented before the planning and zoning board and before the city professional staff and before the city commission this evening is also before you for full and, full and fair consideration. So although Mr. Mealy has waived the full process, where others, others can be called as witnesses, you have the full authority to inquire of Mr. Mealy and his client, who may be present this evening as well. But to the extent that the competent and substantial evidence factors are still a part of your consideration, all items of evidence, for competent and substantial evidence are available on the day as this evening and may part of this evening's record. I'm sure Mr. Mealy will move all items to the record for the purposes of support for his applicant's request before the mayor and commission.
All right, Mr. Mealy, would you answer Commissioner Castillo's first question about?
Yes, sir. So just for the housekeeping part, yes, we, everything I'm going to show here now will be our, one of our exhibits, and if we show anything else, I'll bring it up.
Thank you, Mayor.
And all of this has been provided already to the city electronically.
Thank you, Counselor.
So what we're here for tonight is a site plan approval, and normally, a site plan in a district like this, which is a standard zoning district, not a planned district, would end at the planning and zoning board. The reason this one comes here is because anytime there's a building exceeding 50 feet, the site plan would come to the city commission for final approval. The building is 54 feet and 10 inches at its peak, you know, it's not a flat roof, it's a, you know, a peaked roof. So right at the peak, it's 54 feet, 10 inches. The reason that it has to be that tall is we have robotic equipment inside the building that works on the recycling, and it needs that extra space. So this site, this shows you what we're doing. You see, if you start at the right, the existing hangar, that's basically a storage area, so as we, you know, put the recycling together and put it in bales and so on, we have a place to put it until it's picked up and taken, taken away. So that hangar stays the same. The, where you see existing transfer station building, that also stays the same. That's a transfer station that has been there for years. In fact, in the past, the city used it until you started going to the disposal site at the old wheel elevator plant at 441. So that stays the same. And then you see existing recycling building. So that existing recycling building will become another storage building, and then the new building, which is what you see in color, is a new recycling building with all brand-new equipment, robotic equipment that can really separate out all the things that should not go in the recycling stream. That's really what we're doing new, is everything you see in color, which is the recycling building that I mentioned, is that 54 feet, 10 inches, and then, of course, the landscaping and parking around it. And I'll just show a couple quick more slides to show you what it looks like. So this is just another view. You see the existing facilities I described. You see the new recycling building with the access off of 208th for regular vehicle traffic, like if you work there and you're driving a regular passenger car, pickup truck, you come off 208th, and then the trucks that are bringing in the material to the transfer station or to the recycling building are coming in off of Pembroke Road. This is what the new recycling building's going to look like along 208th. I mean, it's a beautiful building, a lot of nice materials, beautiful landscaping, and that's what it'll look like along 208th. And then this is just the elevation to show you the little portion that's above 50 feet. So that's why we're here. Do you have another question, sir?
Yes, I do. So are there, are there comparable, so, so I, my, my understanding is that this is going to be a facility that will take in recycling, separate it by type, chip it, clean it, whatever, prepare it for its next, its next destination in, in terms of selling it, not burning it, but selling it to someone for reuse?
That's correct. In fact, most of our recycling, once it's baled, you saw in that first picture, the gentleman was walking by all the bales of material, it, when it's sent out, it usually goes to the port and then wherever it's being shipped, but it's going to market, it's not being destroyed or burned.
Will, will you be incinerating any of, any of the material collected at this location?
Um, not, not any of the recycling, no. And the transfer station, we generally take that to one of our landfills, not to a.
Will you be incinerating any, any material at this location? My understanding is you don't have the zoning for that.
No, no incineration at this, at this location, and not even any equipment to do incineration.
Will there ever be a contemplation of, of, of an incinerator at this location?
We have no plans for that.
I see your client saying no. Can you say no for the record?
No for the record, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so this will, there will never be an incinerator at this location?
Never.
Thank you. And, um, um, let me ask you, is it, is it your client's feeling that by building this facility, you might help cities like Pembroke Pines and other cities perhaps to get back into recycling?
That's exactly why we're doing it, because we want people to come back and recycle again.
What magic do you guys have in order to make that happen? In other words, what, I'm sort of interested in, 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 in this. Sir, if you could come forward.
Mr. Mayor?
And as you come forward.
Excuse me, City Attorney?
I'm sorry, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Commissioner. If you will, you're asking questions, and now we're having some testimony, if you'd like, Mayor, and I think for the purpose of the pristine, clear record, I'd like the clerk to please swear in, legal counsel for the applicant and anyone who's testified before the commission. Just because there's been a waiver of the process does not mean that under oath, testimony is still not required. So anyone from the applicant group that intends to testify this evening, please raise your right hand, stand to the occasion, including professional staff. The clerk will swear he went to the record as replete with your honesty and integrity.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. So Commissioner Castillo, now the questions you're asking are now fully under oath, and if you can, Mr. Mealy, would you republish all of your answers to the questions given by the mayor and commission of the record, reflects your honesty and integrity on this issue?
Yes, everything that I've already said was as if I was already under oath. I said it correctly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, thank you.
Sir, would, would you state your name and position for the record?
Absolutely. I'm Michael DeClerc, and I'm the Recycling Operations Director of the State of Florida for WM.
So the story that we've been given is that the bottom fell out of the recycling market. It had to do with international politics, international economics. People were stopped, stopped buying American recyclables, and because of that, it created a situation where we had nowhere to take and sell and reprocess our recycling. So the expense involved in the recycling under traditional methods made it cost prohibitive. And right now, we are incinerating much of the recycling, quote unquote, that we used to, for lack of a better word, recycle. What's your trick? Why do you think you'll be able to economically re-engage recycling when the industry has, has told us that it's so cost prohibitive?
So it's not as dire as what, you know, as what you're portraying or what was conveyed to you. We're actually recycling at Ruder Recycling today.
Right.
In fact, the large majority of the communities in South Florida did not stop. We still have communities across the region that are recycling. We wish that Pembroke Pines would come back because we do have markets. One thing that's changed with the markets the last few years has been a development of domestic plants to handle the materials, not plants in Jacksonville, plants in the Atlanta area, and we have more outlets than we did, say, four years ago when the markets were very poor, and smaller recycling outfits were not able to weather that storm. We were, and we today recycle many communities throughout Broward, Miami-Dade, the Keys, Collier County, all of those are still recycling. And when we talk about traditional recycling, I'm talking about mixed paper, junk mail, cardboard, plastics, glass, all of those types of materials are traditional recycling, and we're, we handle them every single day at Ruder.
I understand.
The purpose of this plant is really to replace an antiquated plant, that it's, it's at the end of its useful life. And so this is simply a replacement and a modernization with better technology that will extract more value, save more from going to the landfill, which is, I think, in everyone's best interest. And we stand ready to engage with Pembroke Pines and any other city that is not currently doing traditional recycling because we do have markets.
Well, I can tell you that the, I, I believe that the vast majority of Pines residents and businesses would be very excited to hear that there is an opportunity to get back into recycling, but let me ask you this. Environmentally, will this be safe? Will you be polluting the, the air? Will you be polluting the ground? Will you be polluting the water?
No, not, in, in no case will it come close to that. Everything will be done inside the building.
Uh huh.
And it's basically the same operation that exists today, but with better technology.
Will they, will there be noxious or unpleasant smells? Will there be unpleasant noises coming from this facility?
No.
Making residential life in that area unpleasant?
No.
Why won't there be noise?
Well, because everything is inside the enclosed building. And it's designed to be all-inclusive, and we can close the doors during the processing time. We have to have the tippy-toe doors open for trucks during the day, so there is that.
So there'll be some beeping, but my understanding is that your building is about two miles from the closest house.
It's closer to roughly half a mile.
Oh, half, excuse me, I said two miles, half a mile.
Half a mile, yes.
Okay. And why won't it have smell?
These are source-separated recycling. Typically, where you would find any kind of odors would be around municipal solid waste. This facility is recyclables only where people actually, it's not trash that's separated with our equipment, it's actual curbside recycling that the resident has already separated it out, if that makes sense.
My remaining question is for Mr. Stam, if, Mr. City Manager, if he can come forward.
Sir?
Your name and your title for the record, please.
Mike Stam is the City Manager and Director of Planning and Economic Development.
Under your review, under your leadership, was this application reviewed?
Absolutely, it wouldn't be here if it wasn't.
Okay, and my question to you is, do you agree with the comments that have been made that by allowing these four feet that they need, because they'd otherwise, my understanding is, if it wasn't for these four feet on the top of the building for the robotics, they could build this as a right. They wouldn't even be here, correct?
Well, to clarify, they would still have to go to the Planning and Zoning Board at the site plan, but the four feet brings the extra level of view to the City Commission.
All right, otherwise, they could build this as a right.
Correct, they do have the plat and square footage to make it work.
Do you agree that the activity that will be going on at this facility enhances the city's ability, the city of Pembroke Pines's ability, to return? And I know that there might be contracts involved and that kind of thing, but just generally, from an operational perspective, that the activity at this location would tend to improve our chances of going back to recycling?
As you stated, there are contracts involved, but when you have more facilities that can provide this type of source separation and improve the services related to recycling, there's a chance that the cost could go down and can provide a service to the community. Obviously, we have procurement rules that have to be followed when it comes to this.
I understand the guarded nature of your answer, because there are contracts involved. But certainly, having a recycling facility within this proximity to the city of Pembroke Pines would tend to favor our goal of returning to recycling.
I'd agree, and we're also looking at this as a regional item. You know, this is improving recycling for the region, which is better for all of us.
I have no further questions.
Let me just make a comment before I recognize anybody. Years ago, I took a tour of the plant, and I was very, very impressed. Everybody in Pembroke Pines residents should take a tour of the plant. They'll see that the belts and all those are separated by those that should be recycled and should not, and will educate people on what to recycle, even though on the cans we put what should be and what should not be. People just don't pay attention. So I would invite anybody to take a tour, to be very impressed.
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. First off, I'm very, very, very pleased to hear that we have an opportunity to get back into recycling. That was a huge, a huge issue for our residents, and it just, it was, the only way to describe it is that it was a mess. It just was a mess. But we had no one who was willing to work with recycling at that point, so we had to do what we had to do, which was get garbage away from our homes and get it somewhere. And again, very, very pleased that we're gonna have this opportunity to be tree huggers again. I think we need to really think about that a lot. But there will be, again, a good, there needs to be a good program on educational, like that pizza box doesn't get in the recycling. That's usually the big example everybody uses. You think the cardboard, but it doesn't really. But I know I would be very assured to be able to say that our city will really step up to the point of educating and providing information to our residents on that. One thing, Mr. Mealy, when you were talking and answering some of my colleagues' questions, you did mention that while this is recycling, at home, I'm gonna recycle, and then you're gonna recycle when it gets to you, however, you're gonna break it up at this new plant. But you did mention also that there will still be some, if I heard you correctly, some that may go to this plant that doesn't really meet the recycling standards and would have to then be dealt with, and I think you mentioned landfill. So can you, I just wanna make sure I heard you correctly. Put your speaker on, please, and I just wanna make sure I heard you correctly on that.
I was really talking about at the existing transfer station, that's regular solid waste. That's already there, we're not changing that. If the material is brought there as a transfer station, then it's trucked away, and it would probably go to one of our landfills. The recycling is recycling. It's going into the market, into recycling. So I was talking, when I said about the landfill, that's the transfer station.
Okay, okay, 'cause I was confused in thinking that if at home, I thought I recycled correctly in my blue bin or whatever, and it goes, but when it gets to the plant, the robotic says, wait, this shouldn't be here, and casts it to the side. That's what I thought you were saying, would that then would go to a landfill at that point?
So if a truck comes in and it's got recycling in it, but it also, somebody put in garbage, right, so it's in that truck. When it comes into our building, they're gonna separate that garbage out, and then that garbage would go over to the transfer station. All of the recycling would stay in the recycling building, be baled, you know, put together and taken away. The good news about this new building is it can extract almost every piece of garbage that's in there. We used to be able to get with the old building about eighty to eighty-five percent clean. With this building, we'll be able to get up to like ninety-five percent clean, to get everything that's not, the pizza box that's in there, to get it out. And that pizza box, of course, can't be recycled, so it goes to the transfer station, and then it'll be taken to the proper disposal site.
Okay, and so as Mr. DeClerc said, there now, you guys have found a market for the recycling, which was the big issue that we were all, we were all told before, was why it needed to stop, was there was no place to do it. It wasn't, it wasn't a thing anymore for a while there, and so nobody was doing it. But you're assured that you're good.
We want you to come back with us and work with us again, and we know you have to do contracts and everything. But the one thing I will say is in this type of business, transportation costs are a major factor. And so the fact that the facility is in your city, the transportation costs for you are gonna be less because we're close by.
Right, well, the close by is really, is really good. The blue cans being used again are, that's pretty cool, the recycling, so thank you.
And I remember my blue can, it had a sticker on top that told you what to put in and what not to put in.
Exactly.
Education, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor Stipe asked a lot of questions I was gonna bring forward, Mr. Mealy, and good evening. So the facility, I see it operate every day. I see the existing facility operates every day, all day long. So we know that new technology is gonna bring new market. What's gonna be the volume, if you know, if you need some help, please ask, what's gonna be the increase in the number of trucks that will be going to the site as a result of this improvement?
Name again, please.
My name is Michael DeClerc. We already hold the large majority of the volume in the region, so there might be some incremental changes to that, but it's not gonna be significant because we already have most of the volume, and we have it today. It's just, you know, in a different building. I can't put a number on it. I can tell you that there are a few communities we don't have, Pembroke Pines is one of them. But it's hard to say definitively how many will come back on board. But we wanna build a facility that is for today and for tomorrow because we know population keeps going up, which produces more recycling and more waste.
Thank you, Mr. DeClerc. I'm gonna press just a little bit more on you, okay? How many trucks are you currently receiving on a daily basis?
At the recycling plant, it's about a hundred and twenty.
How about on campus?
The transfer station, I believe, Dennis, is a hundred and thirty-five. I believe it's a hundred and thirty-five at the transfer station.
In addition to the one seventy-five? That's about four hundred?
Pardon me?
Three hundred, it brings about three hundred trucks?
Yeah, that's about right.
Okay. And as a result of this facility, you anticipate, how many, how many more trucks above three hundred?
Not many more because the transfer station operation's not gonna change, so that number is what it is for the recycling center. I would say more, no more than twenty to forty at max, estimated.
That was actually very good. The report that's part of the backup, it's Exhibit B, the operations narrative, says that today at the recycling facility, we have about a hundred and twenty trucks a day. Remember, under the agreement you approved earlier, it's trips, so a hundred and twenty trucks equals two hundred and forty trips, 'cause we count them going in and going out. And we anticipate adding about another forty trucks a day, so that would be another eighty trips, 'cause forty trucks in, in and out. So going from a hundred and twenty to about a hundred and sixty.
Total trucks, three hundred and twenty trips.
Right, 'cause you double the number of trucks with trips.
And Mr. Mealy, you and I discussed math leading up to this item, so I know what the numbers are, but I wanna make sure the residents know that, you know, we are going to see an increase in vehicle traffic. The commission just unanimously passed another item related to the number of trips coming in and out of the facility, and this is a fifteen-year deal, right? So what roads are gonna be used, Mr. Mealy?
Well, today, all of our trucks come in off of US twenty-seven and east on Pembroke Road. Now, of course, we all know that Pembroke Road is eventually going to be extended. We still anticipate that the majority of the trucks are gonna come from US twenty-seven, just based on where they're coming from. But it's possible that some will come up I seventy-five and come in that way as well.
Is the current volume, Mr. Mealy, coming out of Dade County, or is it more in Broward?
I think we have some of each, might be the other few. We have both Dade and Broward.
I'm just, I'm asking the questions I ask.
Yeah, the number of vehicles is weighted more toward Broward County, but we do get material from Dade as well.
Okay, and Dade, in recent news, had a little bit of an issue with one of their facilities. How's that going to impact this new technology? And do you anticipate bringing, substituting their current situation and basically hauling everything out of Dade County into this facility?
Yeah, it's really unrelated because that's municipal solid waste, and we're talking about curbside recycling.
Exactly. You had mentioned Jacksonville, Georgia, maybe a few other places. Who owns those plants?
Pratt. Pratt, West Rock have built domestic fiber plant plants, and we also ship a lot of plastics throughout the south to Alabama, KW Plastics, for example. We have about thirty vendors that we sell to out of South Florida. Some are export, but many of them are domestic. In fact, all of our plastics, all of our glass, all of our tin, all of our aluminum, all of that stays in the U.S.
All right.
Okay, so there's been a shift because of global economics. Waste management has figured a way out to be more environmentally friendly, more fiscally responsible, lowering the cost to the users, which is everyone who dumps something in a can, is that-
It never really went away, to be honest with you. It's a myth to say that recycling stopped. It became very difficult, but what's changed, the reasons that we're really bullish on it is, number one, the domestic expansion of mills and more options to sell to, but also the contemplated legislation to make, you know, recycling content mandatory for producers. If that gets through, then recycling is gonna be really in good footing, and that's why we're investing what we are into this.
I appreciate your time, Mr. Good. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, very good information. I just wanna just make sure that I understand, and, Mr. Mayor, if I may ask the attorney for a moment, please. So we're asking these questions and, you know, assuming that they were under oath and things like that, so if anything is found incorrect-
Not assuming they're under oath.
Correct. If anything is found incorrect, what does this, what is the option at that point?
May I respond, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Much like the HCA application from several weeks ago that Mr. Mealy fostered on behalf of his client, there was a resultant order. It was entered by the City Commission, which I shared with you over the past couple of days, signed by the mayor and myself and the city clerk, which represents the timings of fact and conclusions of law that were deuced during the course of the hearing. Just because Mr. Mealy, on behalf of the client, has waived the full hearing process, didn't waive the honesty process. So that in the context of where there was conversation, my belief was it was time to swear the witnesses and to make sure the record reflected that honesty and integrity in their testimony, along with the client, who also so testified. So to answer your question, Commissioner Good, the end result is an order will result from this evening's meeting in the event that the commission votes in favor of this application. It is a site plan approval. Mr. Stam can confirm that on the record, which is legally under the city's code, and there are consequences to noncompliance, several of which occur in the criminal side of the equation, which is perjury. So that if someone testified before this commission in a public forum at that podium and lied to you and chose not to tell the truth, that's an actionable or potentially actionable offense under the criminal laws of the state of Florida. That's certainly a punitive thing to say, but it's a punitive result if someone didn't tell you the truth either. Second part of which is that Mr. Stam testified on behalf of the city with regard to fulfilling all the site plan obligations and requirements. And that order, which will result in a written document, as I mentioned earlier, will in fact give you that public comfort that, in fact, this applicant will comply with the site plan order. In the event that they don't, then the city has remedies, as provided for by law, to take specific legal action to the extent that they fail to comply with their site plan obligations. The end result of which is, is that this commission controls the product. That is, that this is a planning and zoning board recommendation. It was fully vetted by the P and Z Board, which is your local planning agency, and this commission took time and effort and patience to listen to this testimony and ask some very significant and valid substantive questions. This is not a simple application. There are things about this application which require clarity and consistency on the record. And if you're satisfied that this applicant has fulfilled those obligations, you'll be able to vote accordingly.
Okay, based on testimony?
Based on the testimony and evidence, that is correct.
Based on testimony.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Mayor, so I just have a couple of questions. The first question is that what's interesting is the Vice Mayor asked a question, I don't think it was answered, and she asked the applicant if new markets were found, and I don't know that the answer was given for that.
Mr. Mealy, do you remember that question?
I believe what Mr. DeClerc said is that there are new markets because there are domestic facilities now and domestic companies buying.
The question is really simple.
What's that?
She just asked, did the applicant find new markets to be able to move forward with this venture?
I believe his answer was yes.
Okay, so believe or yes?
His answer is yes.
Okay, thank you. The other, the next thing is, is that, so, you know, this whole recycling element is complicated, and the applicant earlier made a statement that it never stopped, which is, you know, probably correct. And probably what really has made this very complicated is the fact that the prices have really gone up very high for recycling, and probably because of our own behaviors, right? Vice Mayor even said, you know, pizza box ain't supposed to be in there, that's considered a contamination. And from my understanding, that if any of the loads, so to say, that come in for recycling are over ten percent of contamination, can be rejected, and it's not considered recycling, it has to be processed again. So I do have a quick question in regards to, you know, what is, what is the current price to process recycling today?
Who would like to answer that question?
Per ton.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
On a per ton basis.
Say my name again, Michael DeClerc. So-
For South Florida, particularly for Broward County.
And while in Broward County, the range is going to be anywhere from about one fifty-four to one sixty-two in that range, and that's before a credit for the material values is applied. And that's very important to understand, which a lot of folks don't. So you have the cost to process, and then the community's credited back for the value of those materials. So the lower the contamination rate, the more the value, and so the net is what really drives the price. And that net typically, right now, is in the ninety-dollar range, ninety to ninety-five-ish after those prices are enacted.
Thank you. So question to the city manager. Has the city ever received any credit for recycling?
City Manager?
I don't believe so, even in the twenty-year contract we have with Ruder, which eventually became Waste Management.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. The next question I have is, what would be the proposed rate going into twenty twenty-four?
Going into next year? I mean, we're building pricing now that is gonna be valid for next year, in that same range.
Has Waste Management provided any quotes to any city in Broward County for what's the proposed rate going to be? for what's the proposed rate going to be for processing recycling?
Yes.
And what was those rates?
One hundred and sixty-two, with the exception of one, which was a total with transportation fee that was on there of one hundred and fifty-four, sixty-eight.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. City Manager, what is our current rate right now for per ton just solid waste disposal?
Currently, I believe it just went up to around fifty-two dollars a ton. That's for co-mingled municipal solid waste, which is incinerated.
Okay, so, when, just looking at the rate of, let's say, one sixty versus the fifty, let's just call it one fifty versus the fifty, you know, that's three times the amount to process recycling for this city than just disposing of it. So, the next question I have is...
Mr. Mayor? Who's that?
Could I, before the follow-up on Commissioner Good's comment? When, or perhaps you could clarify, when you say one hundred and sixty-four dollars a ton, does that also include collection and transportation of recycles sourced separated?
That's the processing cost, however, I will point out again that it's not, that's not what the city would pay, because you get the, what we call an average material value deducted from that.
And you're saying that's nine dollars a ton?
It's about ninety dollars after the material value is applied, roughly.
So, it's roughly around seventy dollars a ton estimating, correct?
Of the value of the material, that's correct.
And then we have the cost of source separating, collecting it for a waste hauler to bring it there.
That is separate.
Okay, thank you.
I will point out that when you do the math on it, most communities are about two dollars per household per month for the processing piece.
So, the, and thank you for your answer, but we're speaking about Pembroke Pines, and so some of these issues that you may be referencing through the state of Florida is not necessarily being applicable here. So, we're having to deal with Pembroke Pines issues. What's interesting to note, though, is that you are building this facility, because right now, well, let me ask this one question. What is the percent of deliveries that are made to your current facilities that exceed the ten percent contamination rate that you reject?
I'm not sure where the ten percent's coming, because we routinely take loads that are more than ten percent contaminated. I'm not sure where that figure's coming from, sir. As part of the AMV, which you may be referring to, is we give it a free ten percent. In other words, we assume that you're going to have at least ten percent. And then, as part of the average material value, we have to pay for the contamination to be disposed of. So, it's after that ten percent that we apply that cost.
Okay, I'm not going to... I won't chase that, but I'll disagree with you only because I know specifically that, you know, loads have been rejected because of contamination, which is part of the issue that Waste Management themselves in the past have presented to other commissions within Broward County of why they're having issues with recycling because of the contamination rate, because they can't recycle it. They just, they bump it, then they got to have another processing fee to move it again. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm still moving forward with a couple of questions here. So, the question that I have after that is, the reason why I ask that question is very important, because a mention was made about increasing the percent recovery of recovered materials in these facilities, right? So, you're going to have this new state-of-the-art facility, which I've seen some in the past, and I'm only assuming that you're going to be better than what I've seen in the past, right? So, they're really good, and you probably can handle certainly a higher level of contamination, so long as the residual isn't exceeding certain.
Your question?
So, the question is, then, if we're at one sixty today, what is the proposed rate going to be once we build this facility?
Mr. Mayor?
You're talking in the same range, because the processing costs are the processing costs. What has driven the price of processing up has been the same thing that's driven up everything else with spiking inflation. We have to pay our people a lot more than we did in years past in order to have employees and treat them the right way. Everything has gone up exponentially in the last, particularly in the last three years. That's what's driven it more than anything, and I really don't see that going backward. When we talk about the ninety-five percent versus the eighty-five percent, what that's speaking to is, with our current antiquated equipment, which is very labor-intensive, we capture about eighty to eighty-five percent of the good recyclables. We don't get everything. With the newer equipment, we can get ninety-five percent of the recyclables. It's a good thing, and we're extracting more value, which goes back to the communities that we service.
So, okay, so, you don't expect the processing cost to change. You probably expect maybe you're going to recover more, maybe the AMV is a little bit more weighted towards, you know, the offset. I don't know what that is, and, Mr. Manager, I'm glad we're having this conversation, because I'm certain that this is good information for you going forward in regards to what is the true cost for recycling, because even still, at ninety and one sixty, that's still seventy dollars a ton versus the fifty dollar that we're paying, you know, so it's still an expense. We're still going, you know, we're going to recycle, we're still going to have to increase the cost to our residents, which has been one of the biggest concerns that we've had all along. The last thing I have is regarding, you say only forty trucks more. And so, it's interesting. Has Waste Management promoted this new recycling facility to other cities in Broward County? And, matter of fact, invited them for a tour, which was not really a tour, but just a view of a rendering?
We routinely get tours. We did have a press conference back in the fall to announce that we would like to do this project.
Right, that you're going to recycle, and that you would like all of Broward County to participate.
And we also have built into our new facility, if a tour does come, they can come up, go up to the second floor, look down onto the recycling floor, which is on the other side of glass, but they could see the process and how it works. Sometimes we get schoolchildren, sometimes we get government officials, that sort of thing.
So, I just want to point out, though, that there is a very active, and we'll call it borderline aggressive, marketing of the recycling facilities not yet built to the rest of Broward County in hopes of bringing that business there, what I would assume. I don't know otherwise why you would market it in such a way to these other counties, which is fine. I'm not opposed to any of this, by the way. But I do want to put some elements on record here, which is very, very important, particularly when we talk about recycling. I don't want to get lost, because we got to recycle facilities. We're going to go ahead and recycle. I think we still have to be cognizant about what is going to be the impact to our residents, because, you know, recycling is important, but so is being able to make the mortgage payment too. So, we don't want to be going there either. So, I very much appreciate what you're doing. Like I say, I don't have any opposition to the fact that you're bringing in a recycling facility that's going to serve, you know, more, you know, maybe in a regional concept, that's fine. But there is an impact to the city, and particularly, I don't believe it's forty, I think it's more. I do agree with the agreement that you all made with regards to the host fee element. I'm fine with that, I think it could be more, I think it should be an escalator. The city manager made it clear to me that maybe, maybe, maybe we can't go there, so.
All right.
Thank you very much.
The good news is, the way the agreement was drafted, if there are more trucks, we'll pay more, because we pay per truck. Let me just say, if this passes, our residents can be very happy. I'm sorry? If this passes, our residents are going to be very happy. Thank you. And you can recycle a pizza box if it's dry. I read my stick. Don't get a greasy pizza, right?
Let me address that, because it's a very, very common topic. If there's no food on it and there's no grease on it, it's perfectly fine. It's just cardboard. That's the myth, okay? But if you have cheese caked all over it, that's when it becomes contamination. I also wanted to mention, because I know education is a very...
I'm watching listening reading.
Education is a very important part of this. We are planning a very robust education room that overlooks the whole facility, and we look forward to partnering with communities and school groups and civic groups on furthering education.
Mayor, I have a quick question.
Great discussion, what's that?
I have one question.
I think we discussed this whole, what could your question be?
My question would be...
We spent an hour on it.
That's okay.
Quick question, please.
Hours of operation, hours of operation. One of the trucks come in and out, and is this going to be a twenty-four-hour sorting deal?
No, it's no change from today, which the receiving hours are six a.m. to six p.m., except on Saturdays, six a.m. to three p.m. We do process until one a.m., but that, there's no trucks coming in and out at those hours, and the building's closed up at that point.
Residents, just want to know, thank you, Mayor.
City clerk, call a roll, please.
Mr. Mayor, please, before you close the public hearing.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Under the provisions of Chapter two eighty-six of the Florida statutes, to the extent possible that any member of the public did come this evening to speak for or against the application, you need to give them a public hearing.
Anybody in the audience want to speak? Yes, sir. You're with the University of Miami now, why you want to speak? By the way, you got a great promotion in the University of Miami. You, no, wasn't he a wrong guy, sir?
Hello, Mayor, how are you?
I'm not as good as you.
I'd like to speak on this topic, but recycling's been a concern for me. My name is Scott Barnett, one nine three four six Southwest Fifth Street. You know, it's a little bit surprising to hear this now, because I've heard in the past year or two, when we've talked about recycling, that the cost went up, the city can't afford to do it anymore. But I was also concerned that, I felt like, I don't know if any of you commissioners can speak to this, but I think there was moments in the past to negotiate better rates, and we kind of blew it and weren't able to negotiate better rates. And, Mayor, you were talking about giving us a lecture about how to recycle, how to do those things. We had that opportunity in the past for the city to educate the residents. I think there should have been more, either promotional materials, marketing materials, not just sending things through, you know, the mail about how to do this, because it was pretty incredible that we were at a point in the city where, longer than it, we had our blow bins, and you know what? We could have done better, I could have done better, for sure.
Put a sticker on the barrel.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, there's, you know, but it's a matter, it was a matter of education. But to hear Waste Management talking about, like, well, they've been doing it, they've been recycling, and we blow it as a city to make it work, I'm a little disappointed about that. The other thing I'm wondering about this is, essentially, from what it sounds like right now, Waste Management is going to be recycling for all these other studies, but we're not actually benefiting from this. So, you have all these cities coming down Pines Boulevard from seventy-five, from US twenty-seven, to come to this one facility. The only thing that I would like to stand on the record is, I hope that there could be more competition. I know that there was a business owner in this area that wanted to develop a recycling plant in this area, and I think that was stymied by Waste Management. Personally, I'm sick of seeing a lot of these monopolies here in our state, whether it's electricity, utilities, or Waste Management, kind of dominating the market. Because when they dominate the market, guess what? They're dictating the prices to all these cities. So, I just hope there can be more competition and, you know, federals. But I do hope that the city's going to get back into this, let's do it, let's make it happen. That's what you're here for, thank you.
Thank you. City clerk, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
I just have a quick question, I'm sorry. Is this twenty-eight and nine?
No, for the record.
Okay, very good.
I didn't hear you, what was it?
Okay, the answer is yes, thank you.
I think quickly, Mayor.
What was the question, I didn't hear it? What was the question?
May I may I respond, Mayor?
Go ahead.
This is the site plan, however you approved under the consent agenda, the host fee agreement, which is conditioned upon the approval of a site plan. So, this evening, when you, if you approve this site plan request, there will be in the order also reflection that you've also approved, for the purpose of the record, the host fee agreement.
Continue to roll, please.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate the opportunity.
Commissioner Good?
Oh, I said yes, thank you.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you all, thank you, guys. Point of order? Point of order, Commissioner Castillo.
Mr. City Attorney, I'm a little confused about whether we actually did pass the host fee item, because my understanding was that it was being pulled.
It was not pulled.
Mr. City Attorney, it was not pulled, correct?
It was my understanding that it was not pulled from consent, and therefore...
And what item is that again?
What's that?
What item was that again?
Twenty-eight.
What you said wasn't pulled.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. So, for the point, so that there is no confusion, I would like to move item twenty-eight for approval.
We already did it.
Are you sure?
Yes, I am.
Because I asked...
The city attorney just said yes.
No, the city attorney just said yes.
All right, let's hold on here. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor.
Item twenty-eight.
There's no need to scream.
I'm not, I'm trying to get you to understand. City Attorney, item twenty-eight.
If you will, Mr. Mayor and the commission, item twenty-eight was on the consent agenda. It was approved with a caveat. The caveat, which is confirmed by the applicant's legal counsel, Mr. Millie, was that it would only be approvable to the extent that item number nineteen was also approved. They were conditioned upon each other, they were mutually dependent, not mutually exclusive. So, Commissioner Castillo is right, and the commission is right. The end result is that the order, if this commission has approved the item, will join together in one conclusive order, which approves the HFA, which is the host fee agreement, and the site plan with specific conditions otherwise imposed by the city.
Mr. City Attorney, my question is, would you like me to move, in order to avoid any possible misunderstanding?
Is that necessary, City Attorney?
Number twenty-eight.
City Attorney, is it necessary?
It would not be legally necessary.
All right, let's move on.
Then we don't need to do it.
Thank you.
Okay, item thirty, City Attorney. Thirty.
We are. Three minute, Mayor.
Right, gentlemen.
For the record, we're now at ordinances and resolutions, beginning with item thirty, which is a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number twenty-two-three-zero-four. On second and final reading, and for the record, it's an ordinance of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, changing the dates of the city's twenty-twenty-four regular municipal election from March twelve, twenty-twenty-four to March nineteen, twenty-twenty-four, in accordance with section one zero one point seventy-five of the Florida statutes, providing for a qualifying period for the March nineteen, twenty-twenty-four irregular municipal election, providing for conflicts, separability, and providing for an effective date. Public hearing for the record, Mayor and commission, item number thirty on the floor.
So, move. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Promoted.
Mr. Castillo, vice mayor's second, public hearing, anybody want to speak on this? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
For the record, Mayor and commission, the permanent number is two zero zero five, permanent ordinance two zero zero five.
Okay, item thirty-one, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and commission, ordinance of first reading. This is a motion to, this is item thirty-one. For the record, it's a motion to pass proposed ordinance number twenty-two-three-zero-three on first reading. It is an ordinance of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter one fifty-five of the land development code of the city of Pembroke Pines by amending section one fifty-five point four zero one, which is entitled zoning map, to amend the city's zoning district map to rezone in approximately five-point-two acre parcel of land generally located south of Pines Boulevard and west of southwest one eighty-fourth Avenue. And more particularly describe in exhibit A, from B three, that's referred to as general business, to R dash T eight, that's referred to as residential townhouse, with the allocation of fifty-four, that's five-four flexibility units, providing for codification, providing for conflict separability, and providing for an effective date. First reading on item thirty-one on the floor for consideration.
Motion?
Thank you, Mayor, motion.
Is there a motion on item thirty-one? Motion? Motion? City Attorney, is no motion.
Are you going to make the motion, Mayor? Pass the gap?
You can make a motion. If you want to make a motion, make it.
I'm asking you...
I'm asking you, do you want to make a motion? No matter, no matter what I'm doing, what do you want to do? Commissioner?
I will move the item if someone seconds it.
All right, is a motion to move the item, is there a second? I'll second the item. Discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Mr. Millie? Or Commissioner Schwartz?
Yeah.
You move the item, go ahead.
Mr. Millie, I guess for the record, state your name and who you're representing. I have a series of questions.
My name's Dennis Millie.
Put the mic on, Mr. Millie.
Yep, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor.
My name is Dennis Millie, two hundred East Broward Boulevard for Lauderdale, on behalf of the applicant. And if I could, I'd like to show a couple of slides and make just a quick presentation.
If I may, Mr. Millie, let me ask a couple of questions, and then you can, as you see fit, for the presentation. This item was deferred to tonight because you and the community need more time to strike a deal. um, you and the community need more time to strike a deal. Has the deal been struck?
Yes.
And, um, the members that you were working with, are they here this evening?
Yes.
Are they here to, uh, testify on the record that they fully support your project?
They said they would, but I'd like to let them speak for themselves.
I would certainly like to have them do that. So I'm just putting that on notice. Okay, so it's my understanding that, um, there's going to be, uh, traffic relief and, uh, traffic improvement at one-hundred-and-eighty-six and Pines Boulevard as a result of this, uh...
So, um, when I was here last time, we talked about the fact that currently, when people are heading, uh, westbound on Pines Boulevard and they want to return to Tuscan Pines, or in the future, if they wanted to return to our property, they would have to make a U-turn at one-hundred-and-eighty-sixth Avenue. And you heard from Mr. Goanaga, who represents the, uh, Board of Estancia, that there's a concern about those continued U-turns. So we had proposed a left turn inbound from Pines Boulevard that would eliminate the need for the U-turns. When we first, uh, mentioned that, the, uh, Tuscan Pines neighborhood had concerns about that, uh, change being made to the driveway location. So we've been working, uh, in the intervening time period since we were here last to work out that detail. So this is the way the traffic works now. Um, you can only make a right turn in and right turn out from Tuscan Pines, where it says subject parcel, that's us. Um, so what we've worked out is... Let me get the right picture here. Okay, here we go. So what we've worked out is what we're showing on this picture. So you would now be able to make a left turn coming in off Pines Boulevard, as well as a right turn in and right turn out. So what was needed was for, uh, us and Tuscan Pines to come to an agreement to make that work. So what we've done, and I have the agreement here, we just signed it this evening, uh, and we'll provide a copy to the city once, you know, it's all final and, uh, we've got, you know, things written here in red pen and everything, um, that we're going to make this change to the driveway, and then we are going to do some things for Tuscan Pines. We're going to be maintaining some of their property, we're going to be putting in a wall between us and them, whereas it would have been a fence in the past. Uh, we're coordinating our signage to make sure it looks consistent. And, um, so I think what I'm showing is something that now can be supported by Estancia, because we're going to eliminate the U-turns, and can be supported by Tuscan Pines, because we've addressed the issues, uh, that they've asked us to address. We're also, uh, replenishing their reserve account and doing some other things financially. Uh, I know those are not, Mr. Stan always reminds me that those are not city issues, those are our private issues, so I will go into those in detail only if you want me to. Uh, but I'd rather, if it's okay, uh, if you hear from the neighbors, uh, who we work with, to see if they're supportive of what I've just described.
Mr. Mealy, Ed, I just, I'll, I'll just spare you just a few more minutes, uh, with me, and then I'd like to hear from the members of the public. So what you stated on the record is we have traffic safety improvement.
That's correct.
Uh, we have, um, we have two communities that, uh, can support the project.
And they are our closest neighbors.
Um, for the, uh, viewers at home, can you tell us about Senate Bill, I think it's two-twenty?
Uh, Senate Bill one-oh-two?
One-oh-two, one-oh-two. And if the deal had not been struck, what would Senate one-oh-two mean to the community and mean to this commission?
So what Senate Bill one-oh-two says, that if a piece of property is zoned commercial, industrial, or mixed use, that if you produce a plan with at least forty percent affordable housing, that you can build the highest density found anywhere within the city, and you can build the highest height anywhere with, the building height, anywhere within the city within one mile of your site. So since this property is zoned commercial, it could be eligible for that type of development.
And what would that look like, Mr. Mealy?
Well, I, I haven't measured what's within a mile, but I've got to believe that it's probably at least six stories, you know, because any commercial or residential building, the building height within a mile, you could match. And I, I would have to picture where it would be. And then the highest density anywhere in the city, um, I think you've got places where it's fifty units an acre. Now, those are very few and far between. Uh, but what the bill says is if you build pursuant to the act and you do forty percent affordable housing, you can have the highest density anywhere in the city, and the highest building height anywhere in the city within a mile. So obviously, we're not building high density, and we're not building tall height.
But if, if, if one-twenty were to be invoked, which your client has the legal authority to do if, if we don't make this zoning change, um, how many acres would be developed on this site?
Well, the way we're doing it, uh, currently...
Under the, under the one-twenty rule?
Right. The way we're doing it currently is we're reserving the back portion for a lake. Uh, I don't know that the lake is possible, it could get smaller, but you'd still have to have drainage. Um, but it wouldn't have to be segregated the way it is. You know, the way, everything along this corridor has been done, uh, is to put the, uh, lake in the back.
Would it be fair to say, Mr. Mealy, you're looking at between two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty, uh, affordable housing units at six stories?
Yeah, I think you, if you did six stories and you got the fifty units an acre, you could certainly do two-hundred-and-fifty units, and forty percent of those would be affordable.
And your client has the legal right to do that today without, without our approval?
Uh, the way, it would have to wait until July first, because that's when the act goes into effect. But what it says is, if you comply with the act, it must be approved administratively, meaning there's no public hearings.
There's no public hearing, and we have no choice, and the residents can, can be outraged, but you move forward, because that's what Tallahassee does. They take away home rule authority.
That's exactly what happened. The legislature decided that they were going to negate some of your land use regulations and on every other city and county in the state, if you complied with the requirements for affordable housing. I want to make it clear, I'm answering the questions, and they are good questions. I just don't want anybody to think that that's what we're proposing to do.
No, I, I understand. And then we also have the, the, uh, the number of cars that would go to two-hundred-and-fifty units. That being all said, um, I would love to be able to hear from, uh, the two communities who are embracing this fifty-four unit, uh, townhouse ownership property, please.
Thank you. And at the end of the public comment, I'd like the opportunity to respond as appropriate. Thank you.
Public comment. Anybody?
Mayor?
Yes. City Clerk?
Mrs. Susan Snyder.
Susan Snyder, you want to come up? Please?
Do you want the two communities first?
Susan Snyder, would you like to come up?
Yes, I would.
Okay. No, no, don't worry. I got it covered.
Yes.
Your name and address, please, and you have three minutes.
Sure. Susan Snyder, seven-thirty Southwest one-hundred-and-ninety-first Avenue.
Speak into the mic, please.
Sure. Better?
Good.
Okay. Should I say it again? Susan Snyder, seven-thirty Southwest one-hundred-and-ninety-first Avenue, Pembroke Pines. Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so in the already overpopulated West Pines community, Pines Avenue is a well-traveled thoroughfare, and you have no doubt heard the request for no more townhomes. There are requests for this request from my residents, and my fellow residents may, uh, make these arguments in writing or in person. Uh, sorry, I have a Lambert's email, she cannot make it tonight. Um, her husband is very out. Um, I guess, go for it. Please don't know I'm rezoning this. This parcel is not a market, a market call for consideration. Five acres here, five acres there, and a patchwork approach is rapidly occurring, and they were only handed, but perfect example of a destruction of our environment. The energy of our power is degraded, and your risk goes up with each new development. In general, the carbon footprint, the carbon footprint grows. It is a local contribution to overall, a shortfall lack of strategic planning. I ask that you better hold on all these decisions until our last reports crafted, with input from our own environmental expertise of the planners, as well as current owners who are not involved, and get a look before all light is left. Perhaps product partners could convert a coal-free security measures across Florida, whose carbon emissions are affected by developers every day. If they're allowed to craft a policy that takes into account and aware of our environment into account, make a strategy to trace over three dollars to reduce the pressures of our human tool, tool, uh, values, more important than a destroyed tank. But sure, fair to this request for rezoning, but also could you please, 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 think ahead to the quality of efficiency and potential ownership opportunity you have to do something different. To help, for thinking to value the action to reduce carbon footprint through the recovery has a plan that includes effective efficient transportation. We've heard about that some time. And despite, others following aggressive plans, but replacing all the major species that contain the capture carbon available energy from Morrison, and, 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 and the price leadership that they want to buy all of oil. All of our smart, all insightful, thoughtful, and articulate individuals are challenging to add to both the resource and carbon path that is in our for our city, our urban communities, our state and country, they're all. Oh, that's a lot. But our little vision is not too much to ask. Put a hold on available decisions, and however, um, there is a better plan, it is for the whole of this Pines, and if that's not enough, just follow to serve your constituents who are already overdeveloped, to extract, to, to help, whether, whether, whether infrastructure to provide service all. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Barnett. Three minutes.
Say the address again?
Yes, sir.
Yes, all right. Scott Barnett, one-nine-three-four-six Southwest Fifth Street. I do live in Estancia, uh, that is adjacent to this property. Um, it's ironic that it's called Sky Ride, but Mr. Mealy, uh, appears to be, uh, taunting us with the idea that there could be a Sky Ride there. Um, obviously, there's been this monopoly system here in Pembroke Pines, where we're just going down the boxes along Pines Boulevard, stamping, you know, new developments. And I think what we should do is, zoning was created for a purpose, wasn't it? Not to just change it for convenience. This was zoned commercial. I believe we need to leave it commercial. Um, residential properties like this are going to present new traffic problems, as they continue to do. And as we've been seeing, all of these developments along the way, Somerset, Franklin, Tuscan Pines, all of these developments along Pines Boulevard, there's no plan, there's no traffic plan, there's no proper traffic planning. And I do want to note that, I'm curious about how, uh, Mr. Mealy was defining that turn-in lane to the south, because there's a turn-in lane that goes to the north, Northwest Turcourt, where that McDonald's is. Um, you know, this is going to be a big mess. And you're going to have cars, you know, like an anthill, going every which way in this area. And it really comes down to one issue, traffic. Here we go again. More density, why are it a Sky Ride than, than Mr. Mealy is, seems to be threatening and trying to scare us into a residential development?
Point, point of the word. It's, I, no, it, it's being misrepresented, Mayor, on the record.
That's my opinion.
Well, no, opinion, opinion...
But you got to represent the right...
It's, Mr. Mealy, it's just explicitly said...
Right.
Explicitly said on the record that that is not being proposed. My question to Mr. Mealy was to explain Senate Bill one-twenty...
Right.
And how Tallahassee is going to jam us...
Right.
In a situation where if we have this exact property that's already zoned for commercial, what can they do with it? They can build affordable housing...
Sure.
At the highest possible height, with the highest possible density...
I apologize, Mr. Mealy, for any...
Within, within the line. There was a, it was a question to clarify, so the public knows...
Good point.
What it could happen...
Right.
Without any of us being...
Then I will, okay, I appreciate that.
I'll give you a couple additional...
And I will, you know, finish that, but, you know, whether it's a six-story building or whether it, this is high density, this is townhomes, this is not single-family homes. I moved to this area because I wanted to live in single-family homes, and I hope you uphold that. What I'd like to do is, I hope they can just leave it commercial, and let's take our chances. Let's see what happens July first, and see what happens. But I don't think there's bus stops or public transportation in that area that would allow for, uh, affordable housing to, to have that be, uh, look, uh, attractive for affordable housing. Um, so hopefully you vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett, appreciate it. Others in the background, want to speak? Was there anybody else? Yes, sir. Your flashlight's on.
Got his flashlight on.
Your phone broke.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Did you hear me?
Okay.
Al Goanaga with Estancia, uh, lived in Estancia. I was the fourth home in Estancia. I've lived there for almost twenty-eight years. Uh, I do not have a, a problem with this, uh, so long as the traffic situation is addressed like this. Uh, I've gone through two or three light changes at the U-turn, I've seen accidents. I, myself, and my wife, were a victim of a head-on collision on Thanksgiving evening, uh, because of all the traffic issues there that we have. I believe that having that turn-in on Pines, that you can go either south or north, would help. The U-turn situation, that sometimes we even have the U-turns going into Estancia. We have to take the, the chain off to allow them to go through before the guard, because if not, it backs up. And we've had officers from Pembroke Pines say, you got to let everybody in, because now we're stacked out the Pembroke Pines. So for many reasons, uh, I, 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 I agree with this. Uh, and, uh, I, I, I don't have a problem with it. Uh, unfortunately, you know, we, you know, you know, progress is progress, whether you call it that or not, and things are going to be built. Uh, twenty-seven years ago, we had deers running around, now we have different situations. It's the way it is. Uh, but, uh, I, I also have an issue with commercial buildings, because I know commercial buildings also bring, you know, food service issues, trucks, garbage bins, there's a whole lot of things. There's no really good answer, but in, in a situation like this, based on what we've been able to accomplish, uh, the, the Estancia folks that I've talked to, and I'm on the board, I'm not the president of the board, but I am on the board, uh, our main concern is to have the traffic situation addressed. Not just in this turn-in, but ongoing, to see what we can do to better the traffic situation there, because it is very dangerous. But we don't have any objections to it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Further questions? Uh, further speakers? What do you? Okay, yes, sir. How are you again?
Good evening.
Good. You're on. You're on.
There we go.
Name and address, please.
George Diaz, one-eight-five-one-three Southwest First Street. Um, I am, uh, I am on the board in Tuscan Pines. And the last time I was here, um, obviously, I was opposing this, uh, since then, you know, um, with, with, um, Mr. Mealy. Um, we've actually come to terms, uh, we have made a deal, um, and, and we are, uh, approving this on, on our side, and we agree, you know, to move forward. Uh, any questions?
Thank you, sir. Questions?
Uh, yes, I do. I do. You said you're on the board. Has your, has your community and your board discussed this issue and given you authority to come here to represent the community that way?
Absolutely. Yes. Uh, in fact, the, the president on the board is also here, I'm just, uh, speaking for us. But yeah, we're, we're both here, we're both, uh, supporting this, and we, we want to move forward with it.
Okay, and so, so you are saying on the record then that you have authority, or your president has authority to go, to say, my community wants this to happen?
Yes, I have authority to, um, to move forward with this.
Got it.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, the, the other gentleman, um...
Mr. Barnett?
No, Al.
Al.
Al, from, from Estancia. Can I ask him that same question, please?
Sir?
Yes, sir.
I don't think he's part of the board.
He said he was on the board.
You're on the board of Estancia?
I'm on the board. I'm one of the directors, I am not the president of the board.
Okay.
So my question is the same that I, that I, that I asked, Mr. Diaz. Are, did your board and your residents discuss this and give you authority to come and say, yes, on the record, this is, we are approving this, and we want to go forward with this? And that happened at a meeting that you had, and...
Yes, our main concern was the traffic situation, and that has been addressed.
But my question is, did they give you authority to come here?
Yes.
To say that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Further discussion? I'm sorry. Will you, we done? Further discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Mr. Schwartz?
Okay, um, Mr. Mealy?
Yes, sir.
Uh, last time we met, there was a, a discussion about one-eighty-six and, and the, uh, and the issues, and the accidents. Um, are you aware of the city's, uh, transportation master plan document? Have you had a chance to review that before tonight's meeting?
Um, I'm not sure, as, as it pertains to this, I'm not sure.
Right. So on page fifty-four, there's a heat map, okay? And right here is the area that, that we're speaking of, about the amount of accidents that are occurring in this narrow thorough, uh, thoroughfare. And it's, it's in here, because the consultants say that we have to fix this. And as a result of Estancia and Tuscan Pines, in their agreement, they're saving lives. And, and for that, I want to thank them for sitting down with you, so And, and for that, I want to thank them for sitting down with you so that we can coalesce what makes the most sense, and that's to make us a better place. So thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Call a roll, please, City Clerk.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Item thirty-one.
Yes. Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
No.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
No.
All right, thank you, thank you all.
For the record, Mayor and Commissioner, the item will be considered for second and final reading on August the second in these very chambers.
All right. Thank you all for coming. Item thirty-two, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, number thirty-two is a resolution. It's a proposed resolution, number twenty twenty-three R fourteen, which is a resolution of the City Commission of the City Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving the transportation master plan attached here to Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference, authorizing and directing the appropriate city officials to take any and all action necessary to effectuate the intent of the resolution, provided for conflicts, severability, provided for effective date. Item thirty-two on the floor, Mayor and Commissioner.
Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Schwartz. Discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Um, I had a conversation with Mr. Stam. Can you come forward, please?
Mr. Stam?
We generally vote to accept reports, not approve them. And I just want to make sure that by using the word approval, what are we actually doing? Are we accepting the report, approving that we've accepted it, or are we approving to move forward to fund all of the components of it? What are we approving?
Mr. Stam?
Mike Stam is just the city manager and director of planning and economic development. Commissioner Castillo, I think it's best said, if you look at number eleven, twelve, and thirteen, the agenda item, and I'll paraphrase really briefly.
Right ahead.
The, the transportation master plan's intention is to serve as a guide for the commission, for the public, and for staff for transportation-related projects. Adoption of the proposed plan does not fund all the proposed projects, and again, should be used as a guide. It gives, it gives ideas as to where we can make improvements to the transportation system in the city. It lays out ideas and concepts that could be explored further, it may help us approach grant funding, but also gives the residents an idea, and I point to some of the items in the plan. If you notice, the beginning of the plan starts with a glossary. This, this document is meant to educate, it's meant to help. All of these items are to provide a guide for our residents, our commission, and our staff to move forward with transportation items. Adopting it does not bound the commission to funding it, it just provides a guide.
Okay, so this is, this is the beginning, this is the, in essence, accepting the document. And then from here, we can begin a dialogue, which will lead to a series of, of votes. By, by approving this item, because I don't really care for this language of approving, unless we're approving. We're, we're really accepting a receipt of the report and agreeing to use it as a guide.
Correct.
Okay. All right, further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Good?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I want to say, who, who is the firm that did this report?
Uh, the firm, Commissioner Good, was metric engineering. Stephon is here.
Is he here?
From metric engineering.
Well, I, I want to say that, a really good job. Personally, I mean, I, the details that you've put in here, if anybody wants to be a transportation engineer, I think they should read this document as primer before they get into the engineering school, I think they would be well ahead. So you all did a very good job, and I do appreciate the details. I do recognize, though, that, you know, if, if I could have had a say, I would have asked for a, a number of more locations for traffic counts. I think you only had about twenty-five in total, which I think is very, very hard to actually capture, you know, the true existing conditions in a city this size, but I'm certain that that was probably driven by, by what the contract value or scope was. But I would like to see more of that in, in the future as we go, because I do understand that this is a, a living document. Is that correct?
You know, obviously, as the various entities, and Commissioner, you well know, working with the MPO, the TIP, the CSLIP, and all these other programs, they're constantly changing, and it's our hope that, you know, we'll be able to supplement as those programs change. So when you say a living document, I would agree to that, that.
Well, I would hope that the city commission can also encourage, you know, the city manager to take a look at areas that may have been oversighted. Like I say, I, I know that, you know, what you all did, but I don't think, again, you know, there was a lot of areas that you could not touch, because there was a limit in what the scope of work was. So what was done was great, it's a great baseline, but there are other things, I think, that need to be addressed. I don't want to be lining up with the MPO and the SRTAX and all that stuff, because one of my comments that I really, that really stood out to me in this document was not so much all those neat things that are happening with the MPO and the SRTAX, but the fact that they're really focused on the local congestion. And matter of fact, on page thirty-four, is probably the most telling to me, which is something that I, you know I'm going to focus on, because this, this is an issue certainly within, within the, with, with the folks that I talk to about traffic. But the very first, this was the second public survey results. And the most important thing to folks that participated in that survey was what type of projects should the city prioritize, and what is that project? Mr. Stam?
Sorry, which chart are you looking to? I'm trying to process what you're saying. Which chart were you looking at?
So if you look on page sixty-four, the very top left, it says.
Thirty-four, top left?
What projects should the city prioritize, and what's the number one response?
Safety and/or traffic calming.
Can you say that on the mic, please?
Safety and/or traffic calming.
Safety and/or traffic calming. So that is what our residents have said they want to see prioritized, not the MPO, not SRTAX, not all these other things. So they would like to see that. So I really got zeroed in on that, and I appreciate that, that, that question was asked. The second thing on, in, in viewing this was dealing, you know, I did make a statement earlier today about the mass transportation when the Broward County BCT Director, was that who that was?
I think that's who it is, right.
Um, you know, um, you know, mass transit, at least certainly within the south, we'll call it the southeastern portion of the city, you know, is, seems to me very, a, a little bit light, when you take a look at the rest of the city, and you look at, you know, how communities are set up and things of that nature. And so that's one of the other things that I would like to also have a little focus on is, is how can we enhance some of the mass transportation in the communities that were actually built for mass transportation? But it seems like they got the least amount. So that's nothing that you can do. I mean, there is a proposal, even the proposal doesn't even really address anything in the southeast portion of the city. So that, I, I, I again will encourage that more is done to that. So a, as Commissioner Castillo said, you know, the word approval is rather interesting, because we're not wanting this to be set in stone. It needs to be modified in accordance with the way that our communities are in need, not other things, but with our communities. So again, I, I applaud the, the report, I appreciate the detail that was provided, it gave me a very good insight on things, and I look forward to, to developing this even further. Thank you.
And I just want to make a comment, too, that MPO, as you know on the chair, has been looking at traffic calming. And they went with the SRTAX issue, because they wanted to change all the traffic lights or new fiber optics to do exactly traffic calming. So I understand what Commissioner Good is saying, but everything is a process, nothing is just a, a stop and go, it's a common practice as we go on. Further questions?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, Commissioner Schwartz.
Mr. Stam, good evening. Page thirty-four, the survey, and, and just for the purposes, just to let the public know, a question was asked, how likely would you ride a bike in the city? And the majority of the survey said that they wouldn't. How likely would you walk in the city? And the majority of the survey says that it's unlikely, highly unlikely. And then, what's really interesting is, would you use a city bus service? And it fell very long the same percentage. Yet, on thirty-five, we asked parents, would you put your kid on a bus? And the majority said no. And would you be interested in having your kid walk to school? And the majority of them said no. The majority of those parents surveyed, the majority of them are school-aged kids, and I imagine that school-aged kids would be non-high school, when I hear school-aged kids, but it could be K through twelve. But what's really interesting is page fifty-four. And again, I referenced it just a few minutes ago about the heat map. And the majority of accidents that occur in the city are along Pines Boulevard. I mean, it makes sense, it's a state road, there's lots of artery. But there's an imbalance here. If we look at Pembroke Road, there's a heat map, but then it stops, because it doesn't go through. I think that the, that the Pembroke Road extension is only going to make this heat map rise out west. I'm concerned about safety, I'm concerned about the dump trucks using Pembroke Road. We just passed the, the recycling, okay? I asked, what roads are they currently using? They're using the roads that they currently can use. But once this Pembroke Road thing connects, it's going to be noise, there's going to be accidents, and we know that these big, big trucks carrying garbage, and we all love driving behind them, because, you know, that's safe, they're going to be operating between six AM and six PM.
And you point the?
The transportation study picked out on page fifty-two at the bottom is that the majority of accidents occur in the daytime, seventy-six percent of the time, as a crash stat. So residents want to be safer, we're tasked with figuring out how this is going to work. And certainly, if there are less cars on the road, there's less opportunity for those cars to hit each other. But based on the survey of Pembroke Pines, despite what you may be seeing on social media, telling people that they should stick their kids on buses, our residents reject that nonsense. They don't want to do that. So I employ this commission, when we accept this tonight, to not deviate from what our residents have already told us. Right now, they have no confidence in public transportation. That's what they're saying. So we are going to have to figure a way to change their mind, not on promises, but on actual delivery. That's all my comments tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Yes. Further discussion? Yes. Commissioner Castillo?
Thank you very much. We didn't really survey very many people compared to the size of the city. And if we actually wanted to do a statistically accurate survey, we would have used different means to achieve that. But I'm thankful for the means that we used, and I'm not critical of the means that we used. I will say this, I believe that it was like fifty-eight or percent of the parents said that they wouldn't be interested in putting their children on a school bus. Does that sound about right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that means that about forty-two percent might be interested. So if forty-two percent of those kids were on school buses instead of in, one at a time in a car, this report, which totals what, two-hundred-and-seventy-five million dollars? Might not be necessary. So before we, before we sort of cavalierly dismiss the common sense of reducing volume in order to contain traffic problems, I think we should study it a little bit more. I don't want to get into it much more tonight, but if we could get just twenty percent of, of, of the schoolchildren on microbus, that would make a huge difference, would it not, on our morning traffic? I see, I'm, I see the gentleman nodding. So in fact, there's this thing, which I'm sure you've heard of, called the Columbus Day Effect. Have you heard of it? So the Columbus Day Effect is that about twenty percent of the people who drive to work are off on Columbus Day. And from one end of the United States to the other, Columbus Day is a wonderful day to drive, because there's twenty percent less cars. Surprise, surprise! So when you reduce volume, you reduce traffic difficulty. So I think that what we should do is, take this a little bit more calmly, look at solutions, not play politics with it, engage, if, if we're going to, if we're going to talk to parents, let's talk to all of them, because this is serious. This isn't some frivolous political matter. Thank you.
Okay, good discussion. Item thirty-two, call a roll, please.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yeah.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
The Director, Mayor and Commissioner, item number thirty-two passed, the permanent number for the resolution is thirty-eight twenty-three.
All right, item thirty-three, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Thirty-three is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three R fifteen, which is a resolution of the City Commission of the City Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving the city's action plan for community development block rent, that's the CDBG program for the year twenty twenty-three, directing the city manager to submit the action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, including any amendments thereto, and authorizing the city manager to execute all required documents, providing for conflicts, severability, providing for effective date. And this arises from the public hearing at the beginning of the meeting, Mayor and Commissioner. Item thirty-three on the floor, thank you.
So moved. All right, moved by Commissioner Castillo, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Public hearing? Anybody want to speak? Hearing none? Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, item thirty-four.
The Director, Mayor and Commissioner, that number is number thirty-eight twenty-four, permanent number, next up is thirty-four. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Thirty-four is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three R eighteen, which is a resolution of the City Commission of Pembroke Pines, Florida, adopting the budget for the City Pembroke Pines Charter Schools, sponsored by the School Board of Broward County, Florida, for the charter school fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of sixty-four million, eight sixty-four, four sixty-six, providing for conflicts, severability, and providing for effective date. Item number thirty-four on the floor.
Moved by the Vice Mayor, is your second?
I'll second it.
Second, Commissioner Castillo? Discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
The City of, the Pembroke Pines Charter Schools is sponsored by the City of Pembroke Pines. It's chartered by the school board.
Sir?
Correct, Mr. City Attorney?
If the mayor respond, Mayor?
Sir.
I think the statute actually makes reference to the word sponsors, they are, they actually are a legal sponsor under the statute.
Right. So they're not, they're not the charterer?
We, we hold the charter that it's sponsored by the school board. It's a, it's a, it's a, statutorily, that's the language that's used, it, it tracks the statute.
Then by all means, let's use it.
But for the record, to be clear, the City of Pembroke Pines owns this charter.
Yes, they do.
Yes, they do.
Further discussion? All, call a roll, please, item thirty-four.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
You're going to have some money, charter, yes.
Motion passed.
And that number for the record is thirty-eight twenty-five, the permanent number.
Item thirty-five, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. This is also a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three R twenty, which is a resolution of the City Commission of Pembroke Pines, Florida, adopting the budget for the Pembroke Pines slash Florida State University Charter Elementary School, for the charter school fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of twenty, of nine million, seven twenty-three, seven twenty-two, providing for conflicts, severability, providing for an effective date. Item thirty-five on the floor.
Moved by Commissioner Castillo, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Discussion? Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
More money, yes.
Motion passed.
For the record, that's number thirty-eight.
Thanks for sticking around.
Thirty-eight twenty-six.
Enjoy your summer. Enjoy your summer.[1700.32] All right, thirty-six, please.
Thirty-six. Next up, thirty-six. This is a item, motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty-twenty-three R-19, which is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, urging the District Four Commission Member to the time effective, the time, the effective date of his resignation to run for mayor pursuant to section ninety-nine point zero-one-two of the Florida statutes, to allow for the District Four vacancy to be filled at the March twenty-twenty-four regular municipal election, providing for conflicts, excuse me, for the record, providing for an effective date, and providing for severability. Item number thirty-six on the floor for consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion, motion, item dies of lack of a motion. Item thirty-seven, please.
Thirty-seven. Coming up, Mayor.
What?
Number thirty-seven, for the record, is a motion to adopt the, if I may, Mr. Mayor, providing to adopt the fire assessment...
I'm sorry, sir. What was you saying? I was being interrupted. What was you saying? I'm just kidding.
I, I'm sorry. I'm focused on your resolution, Mayor.
Item thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. But, but motion to adopt the fire assessment proposed resolution number twenty-twenty-three R-21, which is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, relating to the provision of fire rescue services, facilities, and programs in the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, describing the method of assessing the fire rescue assessed costs against assessed property located within the City of Pembroke Pines, directing the preparation of an assessment role, authorizing a public hearing, and directing the provision of notice thereof, and finally, providing for effective date. Item thirty-seven on the floor.
So moved. Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Castillo, is there a second? I mean, discussion. Hearing on call or roll, please, thirty-seven.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
That number for the record is thirty-eight twenty-seven, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, please. Item thirty-eight.
Item thirty-eight. Next up is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty-twenty-three R-17, which is also a resolution of the City Commission of Pembroke Pines, Florida, relating to the provision of the nuisance abatement on certain real properties by the city in accordance with chapter one zero-one of the city's Code of Ordinances, determining that the certain real property has been specifically and specially benefited by the city's abatement of nuisances thereon, directing the city manager to prepare or to direct the preparation of a preliminary nuisance abatement assessment role, establishing a public hearing for the proposed levy and unpaid nuisance abatement assessments on the annual tax bill, and directing the provision of notice in connection therewith, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and finally, providing for an effective date. Item number thirty-eight on the floor.
Moved by the Vice Mayor, is there a second? Moved by the Vice Mayor, is there a second? I'll second the motion. Discussion. Hearing none. Vice Mayor, you want to...
Yes, yes, Mayor. Um, city manager. Um, I've had a, a number of people that have asked me to explain to them exactly how this is gonna play out and how it would, how it would work. Could you give a pre, a brief description, please, of how this actually is, what it's intended to do?
See, I'm here.
Actually, this is in reference to a code issue. And the, uh, the city has the ability to collect the lien on that code obligation through a special assessment on the tax roll. In this particular situation, there's only one parcel of property that has been cited. The, um, the lien has accumulated to a point whereby the city can collect that lien once the tax bill is issued, and they would be required to pay it at that time.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
No, I'm good. I'm good.
All right. Further discussion? Call or roll, please. Item thirty-eight.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz? Motion passed.
All right, our regular agenda.
That number, Mayor, is thirty-eight twenty-eight for the record.
Thank you, sir. Regular agenda.
Regular agenda number three, Mr. Mayor, is the motion to establish the millage rate to be advertised in the TRIM notice. That's T-R-I-M, provided by the state statute, published by the Broward County Property Appraiser due on August the fourth of twenty-twenty-three. Item three on the floor, Mayor.
Mayor Manager? City Manager, you want to explain what we're doing here? Mayor?
Excuse me?
Hold on.
What is it, Mayor?
City Manager, you want to explain what we're doing?
Uh, this is to set for advertising purposes only a millage rate that you advertise in the TRIM notice whereby when the homeowner receives their notification of the taxes, it would be published at that time. We're required to do so so that the property appraiser is required to have this information no later than August fourth. It is not setting the millage this evening. It's just advertising.
Okay.
A, a number that could, could assist us in funding the general fund budget.
All right. Commissioner Castillo?
Uh, Mr. Manager, the current, the current operating millage is five-point-six-six-nine-oh?
Uh, yes, sir.
I move that City Pembroke Pines advertise five-point-nine-nine-six-oh.
Is there a second?
No increase in millage.
What was it? I'm sorry, what was your number?
Five-point-nine-nine-oh.
It's five-point-six-six-nine-oh, which is the current millage rate. And I'm proposing that we advertise that with no proposed increase in millage rate.
Can I ask a question, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Uh, to my colleague. Uh, that's just on the operating millage. Are, are you addressing also the debt service millage number with that? Or how are, how are you addressing that?
That goes to the motion. I, I would ask the city attorney to answer the question.
City Attorney?
The, and may, Mr. Mayor, Commission, to respond, when you set your tentative millage as, as required by state statute, it applies across the board.
Okay. And, and, Mr. Manager, what, what, what is your recommended millage rate for operating?
My recommendation on the agenda is to advertise it.
Yes, I understand that. I'm asking you what your recommended capital millage rate is.
Uh, the, the GO bond, it, that is set for, um, point-three-eight-three-five.
And what is the, and what is the current, uh, uh, oper, uh, uh, capital millage?
It's point-four-one-five-nine.
Okay. So, uh, point well taken, Vice Mayor. I, uh, move the operating millage rate at the current rate of, of five-point-six-six-nine-oh, and the capital rate at point-three-eight-three-five, which is the city manager's recommendation.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies of lack of a second.
I, I, I want to ask, uh, is that your recommendation, Mr. Manager? For the, uh, we're talking about the debt service millage rate?
Debt service millage rate, we have no control over. It is what it is.
Our, 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 our...
It's...
Hold on. Our finance director looks like she needs to get the floor. Pardon me for interrupting. This is Jim. I want to make sure we get this right.
Good evening. Lisa Chung, Assistant City Manager and Finance Director. Just, uh, one correction, Mr. Dodge. The debt millage would be at zero-point-three-four-two-seven for the new millage rate for the debt.
I'm sorry. I was looking at the table, and, and that is, that is correct.
Thank you for that.
I'd like to amend my motion.
Yes, a different number?
The motion is, uh, an operating millage rate of five-point-six-six-nine-oh, which represents no increase in millage. And the capital millage would be point-three-four-two-seven, which is the city manager's recommendation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I believe the city manager's recommendation you're referring to is the capital one, not the proposed operating millage.
Mr. ... That's correct.
Okay.
That's what I meant.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, my only comment on that, uh, in years past, uh, members of this commission, uh, have basically indicated in public comment, why are we limiting ourselves to a number when this is for advertising purposes only? Uh, at the present time, we have a deficit of almost eleven million dollars in the general fund, which means if you approve this amount of five-point-six-six-nine-zero, we would have to go into the budget and begin to cut eleven million dollars off of projects that the commission in workshop and as recommendations have asked us to do. Not only would we have to remove those items, we would have to also make additional, um, uh, cuts in that budget. I don't believe that is possible, uh, without, uh, maybe, uh, which would affect cutting some services.
And, and, and I just want to make a comment. And I, I, I think you're right. And I think if you don't set an advertise rate, you can't do anything with it. It's, it's done. But if you set advertise rate, you have flexibility and move. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I, I just, um, um, city manager, when I'm looking at what they adopted for twenty-two, twenty-three, the, the total millage with the operating and the debt service is six-point-oh-five-two-five.
Correct.
But what you're proposing, while increasing the, uh, the operating millage, um, slightly, there is also a decrease in the debt service, uh, money. And so if we were to accept, uh, what you're, what you are proposing, there really is a very small, uh, change. I mean, while no one wants to increase anybody's taxes, certainly not. But I think we need to put it into perspective what the total millage would, would be if, in fact, we accepted your recommendation. Um, and that would be zero-point-four-five-nine-two, which is still, still, and, still an increase, uh, for sure. But it's certainly not a huge, you know, number that we've, that we have talked about in, in the past. So I think it's important that we understand that as well.
Hold on, Mr. Mayor? Hold on, City Manager?
Yes. I, I'm not recommending that you increase it once we get to the end of the process. As you know, there are still revenues that the state has not provided us the final numbers for. And, uh, we have, uh, a major issue of a gap between revenues and expenditures. The eleven million dollars that we are referring to is only in the general fund operating. We have an eight-million-dollar deficit in the road and bridge fund, and that's based on gas taxes. So normally, what has happened in the past is if we have a, a shortfall in the road and bridge fund, we supplement it with the general fund. Once again, that complicates that further. The purpose of this is only for advertising purposes, to give the commission the flexibility come September, when you have two public hearings, uh, and two meetings to determine whether or not you want to raise it. By adopting the current millage, you are telling us today that we have to go in and find eleven million dollars worth of cuts in the general fund budget at the present time. And I'm telling you that will affect providing of services because even our capital budget, uh, doesn't come close to that.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner?
I've been hearing this story for twenty years, and, uh, I have great respect in regard for the city manager. And I, and I believe that from his perspective, what he's, what he's saying and recommending is sound. But from our perspective, it's unacceptable. If, if you want, if you want to stretch your dollars in, in road and bridge fund, use capital funding for it. And that'll stretch your dollars, and you'll be able to do a lot more, uh, if, if we just don't go with this pay-as-you-go. You have to use the tools in the toolbox, because here's the tool that isn't available right now. Residents are up to their neck with mortgage increase, uh, uh, of, uh, interest rates. Uh, Representative Bartman was here talking today about the outrageous amount of money that people are paying for, um, uh, homeowner insurance. This is, we are not in a, in a raised taxes mode here in Pembroke Pines. So I'm okay, I'm okay with, uh, with, and in addition, we just got an eight points, uh, almost seven percent increase in property value, which is gonna bring us another, what, seven million dollars? Almost eight million dollars? We need to learn how to live within our means. And we have issues to deal with here, and there are new ways to, uh, to manage that within our means. I've been hearing this over and over again. The second thing is, the easiest way to get a tax increase is to advertise it. Because now the, the camel's nose is under the tent. And before you know it, the whole camel's there. And my mission for the last, I don't know how many years, has been to keep this rate as low as possible, as low as possible. Let me explain it to you. So you know that, you know that dial in your car that says C and H, you know, hot and cold? So that applies to cities too. Millage rate is zero, millage rate is ten. Millage rate is zero means no property tax come in. After ten mils, they come and they take the keys away. The state does. We're not allowed to charge more than ten mils. We are now at five-point-six, almost at six. The needle is heading toward H. And what we need to do is think about how we can do the job that we need to do while putting the needle closer to C. That's our job. So what I'm saying, what I'm saying to you is that there's no way that I can bring myself in a city full of people living on, uh, retirees living on fixed incomes, uh, families trying to make ends meet despite these huge, huge amounts of, uh, of, 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 of new, uh, uh, costs that they have to deal with, be, be that, uh, uh, mortgage, interest rates skyrocketing, uh, uh, homeowner insurance skyrocketing. There's no, the costs of food skyrocketing. There is no way that this commissioner is gonna vote for a tax increase. You all want to do that? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor?
But there's no way I'm... Now, I want to say something. First of all, we're not talking about a tax increase.
Yes, we are.
We're not talking about a tax increase.
Yes, we are.
We're talking about advertise rate.
That's the difference without a distinction.
Right here in front of us is advertise rate.
There's no need for you to...
Well, listen, just listen to it.
I, I...
You keep saying about your millage rate.
Very little that you can enlighten me on, I've done this a long time.
Yes, Mayor. Read the item.
Mr. Mayor?
Read the item, City Attorney.
For the record, again, item number three is a motion to establish the millage rate to be advertised in the TRIM notice published by the Broward County Property Appraiser due on August the fourth.
Thank you. Walk, walk. Thank you. City, City Manager, sing.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to point out, and it's on exhibit one. If you go back to the year fiscal year twenty-sixteen, seventeen, our total millage rate was six-point-two-three-eight-one. And you'll notice that every single year it has gone down. The issue we have right now is we're in, we're in the midst of labor negotiations. I have been told over and over again, we need to assist our employees because they have to deal with the same issues of the economy and the price of food and the cost going up. And we have done so to the best of our ability. We're not there right now. But that added to the cost. We have to pay increased cost of fuel. We have to pay increased cost of liability insurance, health insurance, and all of these other costs. So even if we did receive that eight percent increase in property taxes, that was eaten up just by employee increases as well as our other costs. So it's not like we have all this surplus money around. Certainly during, uh, our workshops in August, when we'll have all the information available. And if it's still the desire for the commission to maintain the same millage rate as we currently have, then we would have to go through that process and decide the priorities for the city. And what is it you want us to look at? Is it wages? Is it, uh, stopping some particular programs that were, uh, the commission felt were essential? And as far as capitalizing projects for road and bridge fund, I agree with the commissioner. That's possible. But that has nothing to do with this eleven-million-dollar deficit.
Yeah.
All right. I want, I want the city, um, clerk, there's, as I see it, two items in front of us that were changed. What is the item in front of us to be voted on?
The item before this evening, Mayor, is the motion to establish the millage rate.
No, 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 no. There was a, there was a motion made by Commissioner Castillo. He changed it to another motion. I want to know exactly what is on the board to vote for.
Would you like me to tell you?
City clerk, please, tell me.
Mayor?
Yes.
The original motion was to move the current to, or the rate to five-point-six-six-nine-zero, which died for lack of a second. Then Commissioner Castillo made an amended motion pertaining to the millage of five-point-six-six-nine-zero and point-three-four-two-seven. I'm not too clear about that second.
That's on the floor in front of us.
Right.
Okay. Discussion on that motion.
I'd like to, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Is there a second to the motion?
I didn't hear any. Is there a second?
What discussion do you want to...
There was no second motion at that time.
Motion dies for lack of a second. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor. For me, this is number twelve. And if we ask the clerk to, um, play the recordings, the last twelve years, the second meeting of June, you get this. Back and forth. Um, Ms. Chung and I have not had a conversation regarding this item. And I'm not gonna be one to blindside you, but I want to ask you to come up, and if you don't have the answer, I apologize in advance.
Ms. Chung?
Lisa Chung, Assistant City Manager and Finance Director.
You do a heck of a job, and your team does too. And I want to thank you for the hard work that you've put in on this. Okay? Make sure you let them know that, that I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay. So in years past, we've talked about the TRIM notice and what we actually come to at the end of the line at the second meeting in September. Ms. Chung, we have, um, twenty-fourteen up on the board. Yeah? Do we have any idea what the advertising rates were compared to what it actually wound up being?
I do not know that. I'm sorry.
Okay, I can tell you what it is. Okay, I can tell you what it is. It's never what's advertised. It never has been unless it was a flat rate, which during COVID, we did that. And certainly, anyone who has a homestead exemption will have a three percent cap of increase. That's what you're paying. You're paying three percent more. Why? Because that's what the state constitution says that you're going to do, regardless if the millage stays the same or if it goes up. You're capped at three percent of value, okay? Mr. Dodge, thank you, Ms. Chung.
Thank you. Actually, I do have that.
You do? Okay. So go back, if you just go back twelve years, I'd like to know what we advertised, how many times we advertised it and reduced it at the end of those twelve years.
Twelve years, so 2013, 2014, 15, the rate that you have there is the actual rate that was advertised, the five point six three six eight was the rate that we actually advertised, and that we've done that now since 2012, all the way through 2017. The rate that was advertised as a trim was the actual rate that we adopted.
Yep, see? Twelve for twelve. Right?
Twenty twelve to twenty...
No, I'm saying, twelve out of twelve years, whatever we've put out to the public has been the one that's been at the end of the, has been at the end.
Mr. Mayor, that was because it was my recommendation at the time.
Of course it was, yeah.
Because I felt comfortable at that time.
Of course.
That we didn't have such a large deficit that we'd be able to bridge the gap. I am not that certain at this point.
Point of clarification?
Hold on, Commissioner Schwartz.
Not always, Charlie.
Commissioner Schwartz will finish.
Always.
Ms. Chung, thank you for helping. Mr. Dodge?
Yes?
I think it was budget year thirteen fourteen, the city was in a financial urgency declaration for labor. Remember that? For teachers in a charter school, thirteen fourteen. And in 2010, before I got here, there was financial urgency, and basically our general employees got wiped out as a result of that process. And we wound up with all kinds of different folks running different departments in our I remember that financial urgency. Now, we don't have a short sale crisis as we did back in eight, nine, and a part of ten. We certainly have resolved the majority of our fiscal ends, but then COVID hit. So the commission took the position that we are not going to raise money, raise taxes during a pandemic. So, Mr. Dodge, is it correct that you went into our reserves in order to balance the majority of, the majority of what our expenditures were going to be during that time period?
We programmed that we said we were going to use our reserves, but during the course of the year, we were able to find other savings that we did not have to.
Okay. So, and you've been doing this a long time. And so when the city manager says, I don't know what the state of Florida is going to do to us, he's talking from a man from experience. Nineteen eighty-nine, sir, you've been at the head of the ship, right? That's thirty-four years now. And this city continues to get financial awards and recognition, and, you know, we have, we have a lot to be proud for in this city that we don't waste. Does government waste happen? Yes. We're not immune to that. But one of the things that attracts so many people to Pembroke Pines is our fiscal responsibility. And that is driven by the city manager and the city finance director. That's who pushes policy. So then you have the elected body who says, city manager, we need this and we need that. And we have workshops throughout the year, and the manager works very hard to make sure that we stay within budget. Eleven million dollars is a lot of, is a big gap, yeah? In the twelve years I've been up here, I haven't heard the number that wide. So I think that if we were to postpone some capital needs, we've had that discussion before, and then we have pipes in the ground that don't seem to work right, and we have other infrastructure in the city that's just not working right. How did this happen?
Commissioner, we need a motion.
Well, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to build a consensus here to do the right thing. I don't know what the number is, but I don't know if eleven million dollar, I don't think there's enough tourniquets to close eleven million dollar gap, unless we want to discuss right now what you're taking off the table in your district. And I'm going to ask the city manager, what projects in each district are we just going to whack tonight? Because it's going to be tonight, it's not going to be over the summer, give you a chance to come back. What is going to be killed tonight? What pet projects are going to be killed? I can tell you who won't be killed. The people who go to work every single day in this building, serving us. And certainly not the five of us.
Mr. Manager, you want to add?
It's the staff that's doing that. It's our police officers.
All right.
It's our firefighters.
All right, we got it. Mr. Manager, you want to answer?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, my response is still the same. We've always said, when we establish a millage rate, it's for advertising purposes only. I have felt more comfortable in the past that we could bridge that. At this point, I don't. Does it mean that you can advertise the five point six six nine zero? No, you can advertise it. However, you're going to have to look at your budget during the month of August, and there are going to be a necessary cut in that budget by, it may not be eleven, we may get down to ten, we may get down to nine, I don't know, but it's a significant amount. But there's not enough capital in the general fund budget, even if you eliminated everything. If we eliminated every proposed police car, if we eliminated every proposed improvement to a park, I don't know, I don't have that budget in front of me if we would get there. So you just have to be aware that you are tying your hands for adopting of a budget that you might want. And if you remember through the workshop meetings, there are many items that the commission proposed that we've included within that budget, items that are new. And I don't want to mention it like I'm addressing it because a particular commission recommended it, but you as a group are going to have to look at all those projects and prioritize which ones you might need to do. I am only talking about the road, I'm sorry, I'm only talking about the general fund budget this evening. I'm not talking about the other enterprise funds.
Mayor, just one last follow-up, and then I'll let everyone else get it on. During those workshop meetings, there was a specific discussion about going out for revenue bonds and, not or, and asking the voters for a GEO bond. Voter approved. So there seems to be a disconnect from what I heard during the workshops. I'm just saying, it, there was advocacy by some to go out and just do a revenue bond, which means that three votes, you pay more. No discussion, no votes by the public.
Point of clarification?
And the GEO bond is...
Point of clarification, Commissioner Castillo.
That is inaccurate. When you finance something, you actually pay less. You may pay more for it over time, but you pay less. It becomes affordable. That's why we mortgage homes and finance cars. Okay? So that's inaccurate. Let's be accurate when we're talking about money.
Let me be, let me be as specific, let me be as specific as possible. Commissioner Castillo is in favor of going out for revenue bonds, which means that we pay more, meaning that we pay for...
Point of clarification.
Millage.
Point of clarification. General, the point has been made. Let's stop this game.
Commissioner...
We're talking about money.
Commissioner Castillo, I need a motion for...
I have a motion.
And it did not get a second. I have a motion.
I have a new motion.
Go ahead.
I move, I move that the regular millage rate should stay the same at five point six six nine oh, and that we accept the city manager's capital rate recommendation of point three four two seven.
That was the original motion.
Yes, I'm renewing it.
I have a question.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
So on that, on that motion, with those numbers that you're talking about.
Right.
There is a point one five difference in what you're proposing and what the city manager is proposing at the six point one six nine oh. So I would like to ask, Ms. Chung, what dollar amount, what amount does point one five seven three equal? What are we talking about?
It's less than half a mil, right?
It's only...
It's only about one and a half percent.
So it comes to about a million dollars.
Commissioner?
It's all right.
And my staff is telling me, sorry, two point six million dollars.
Oh, two point six.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Two point six.
Two point six million dollars. So what we're talking about then is, is on this, is on what the city manager is asking for, or not asking for, but the recommended number here, six point one six nine oh, and the difference in what the proposal that, I'm not sure if it was seconded yet or not from my colleague, is only, it's a difference of two point five million dollars, right?
Right.
That's right, two point six million dollars.
Not eleven.
I'm sorry?
No, no, no.
No, no, I'm asking...
No cross-talking.
No, I'm asking...
Folks, listen.
I'm asking...
City Attorney.
Yes, Mayor.
I'm going to retain Robert's rules here, and we're going to run this commission right. This is an report, right? I'm not going to have everybody put their opinion in it, because you'll get nowhere. Do I have your backing, City Attorney?
Mayor, you have the floor, you have the gavel.
Thank you. Let's get on to business. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And I was asking the question again. Those are the numbers, and what you're telling me is then, from what, the difference between what the city manager is asking us to post as a trim notice that we would be able to reduce at a point, right, is the only difference in that and what my colleague has proposed is two and a half million dollars, correct? Ms. Chung, because I'm basing that on the numbers that my colleague had, which was the five point six six nine oh, and then the proposed debt service of zero point three four two seven.
Hold on one second.
Okay.
That difference is only point zero four.
I had point one five.
I don't know where you get, what do you get?
Point one five.
The point one five seven three, that amount's a two point six million dollars.
Two point six, the point one five seven three, which is a correct number.
Yes.
A correct amount amounts to two point six million dollars.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So then I guess my question would be, if that's the difference, two point six million dollars, while that still is a nice chunk of money, are we willing to say we don't want to take what the city manager is asking us to post as the recommended, which we can drop, for two point six million dollars in a budget of, what's our budget number for this year, Mr. Dodge?
Well, the difference was eleven million, so now you're down to about eight and a half million deficit.
And I've been sitting here for a number of years too, and I have heard many times where we've been at seven, eight, nine, ten million dollars going into this discussion, and while it's not a position we want to be in, Mr. Dodge, you have always been able to find a way to help out and make that happen, correct?
It's a miracle.
I'm sorry? I'm not asking...
It's a miracle.
Okay, no, I'm...
Commissioner Castillo, please keep your remarks to yourself.
I'm sorry, just...
Good.
Don't scream at me, please.
Keep your remarks to yourself.
Okay.
This is such a fun place to sit up here.
All right, listen, here's where we are. We have a motion on the floor, five point five six six nine oh, a point three four two seven.
Right.
That's the motion on the floor. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies. Vice Mayor, do you have a motion?
Motion to establish the millage rate to be advertised in the trim notice published by the Broward County Property Appraiser due August fourth, 2023, at the recommended rate of, recommended by city manager, of six point one six nine oh, knowing that that is the maximum and that we will, as we have in the past, those numbers have changed.
Is there a second? Is there a second? I'll second that motion. All right? Discussion on the motion. Anyone? All right, call a roll, please.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yeah.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
No.
Commissioner Schwartz?
No.
Commissioner Castillo?
No.
I have a motion.
I have a motion.
Go ahead, Commissioner Castillo.
Thank you. I'd like to move the millage rate at five point six six nine oh, and the capital millage rate at three point four two seven.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies lack of a second. Let me have a motion we can vote on, please, anybody?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to...
Mr. Good, Commissioner Good, you got a motion we can vote on?
Well, I'd like to make a comment.
Well, let's try it.
So I, I mean, obviously, this is the range, right? What it is today versus what we are asking for tomorrow. I can't agree with what's today only because, you know, I think holding the same, you know, holding the line of what we're doing today is most appropriate, and that would mean that there would be an increase of point zero four zero eight to the operating millage rate would leave us at an aggregate of six point zero five two five. So I can go there, which means that I'm not willing to increase the millage rate, the aggregate millage rate as it exists today. Going any higher, you know, sort of tonight was one of the defining reasons why I can't go much higher, because again, you know, I felt that we gave money away that should have been a little bit more prudently evaluated. And so the max that I could see in this as well, so I looked at the, so you got the history of it, right? So year-over-year change in aggregate millage from 2015 to 2023 is a point zero one seven, or excuse me, a zero point one seven seven eight reduction over that period of time, which is pretty good, which alludes to Commissioner Castillo's comment earlier about, you know, moving the needle towards C. And so the max that I could see myself voting for is that difference in the aggregate of a point one seven seven eight mil increase to the operating millage rate. So I will make a motion then to give, to have a operating millage of five point seven zero nine eight, and a debt service millage of point three four two seven, which would leave us with an aggregate of six point zero five two five. That's my motion.
All right. So this motion is to establish the millage rate to be advertised in a trip notice... All right, so this motion is to establish the millage rate to be advertised in a trip notice published by the Broward County Property Appraiser due August fourth, twenty twenty three. You heard the motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
May, could you give the numbers again, please?
Five point seven zero nine eight, point three four two seven.
That's correct.
Comments?
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Haven't heard a second.
I'm trying to follow the math. Um.
I'm, I'm trying to look for a second. Or get the gems. Motion dies for lack of a second.
Mayor?
I need another motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Commissioner Castillo.
I'd like to move five point six six nine oh with a operating millage at three point four two seven.
You did that before and it didn't get a second?
Yes, and I'm doing it again.
Well, you didn't get a second?
I have every right to make a motion.
All right, is there a second to the motion? Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second to the motion? Motion dies. I need a motion.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Uh, to my two, uh, Commissioner Good. How did, how did you arrive at the, um, five point seven zero nine eight?
So I subtracted, uh, the debt service millage rate of twenty three from the proposed twenty four, which gave a zero point zero.
Oh, okay.
Four zero eight number. And I added that to the five point six six nine oh. Because the twenty four debt service millage has gone down. And so, I'm just looking at increasing the operating millage to corresponding amount to hold it at six point zero five two five, which is what we have today.
That's on the graph. Commissioner, if you look at it, it's the, it's on the exhibit that we provided to you for twenty two twenty three. The aggregate is, the aggregate to keep it the same today is six point zero five two five.
Yeah, the numbers are just a little different than.
That's what's on the graph, you haven't.
Right, right, but my co- my colleagues' number.
What's different than, what's it look?
Well, they're.
No, it's the same.
They're, 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 they're different, but the aggregate ends up being the same.
Yeah, I'm, Mr. Mayor, if I may help?
Go ahead, please, please.
I, I believe in what Commissioner Good has done is simply to maintain what, uh, is currently the debt service millage.
Correct.
And because it was reduced, he took that difference and added it to the five point six six nine zero. Which keeps the aggregate millage the same as it is for the current year, which is a total of six point zero five two five. So there is no increase, it's maintaining it.
Is there a second? Can I ask the city manager a question?
Go ahead. Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, city manager, um, six oh five two five, is that the eleven million?
No, that leaves us with a deficit of about eight and a half million, probably.
Mr. Dodge. Two and a half million dollar swing.
About two point six, isn't it?
I'm saying, this is your comfort level.
Uh, I, I don't know, I just did the math in my head. Is that correct, Lisa?
Uh, no, that, that, um, motion that Commissioner, oh, sorry. The motion that Commissioner Good made gives us an additional six hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. So that reduces the deficit that we were having.
Okay, you're correct.
Right.
To eleven million instead of eleven, yeah, actually, eleven point eight million was the actual deficit.
So it wasn't eleven, it was almost twelve.
Almost twelve, yes, closer to twelve.
All right, so now we have another million dollars on the table. It wasn't, I, I mean, if, if we're gonna, if we're going, in fairness, if, if we are going to talk math, we need to make sure we're on the same page. Because an eight hundred thousand dollar swing is a tremendous amount of money. Okay, so, I don't know how long we've been on this now, but Mayor, in fairness, um, we're at eleven point eight. We're not at eleven, we're at eleven point eight, and that's the number that we have to start working from. So, um, I, I'd like to get to a consensus here, um.
One more motion.
I'd like to get to a consensus here, but it seems like there, there is a, a large divide. Um. Even with Commissioner Good's effort, it's. It's, it's short. Mr. Dodge. I know you don't like to negotiate with yourself. Okay?
I'm not negotiating, I'm just stating the facts.
I, I understand.
The commission can decide whatever it is they want to do.
I understand that. And I, and I know, and I know where this is, is gonna go if the state doesn't deliver, uh, the numbers that historically we may have seen. I know we picked up a half a million in a. In some road and bridge earlier tonight, soon as that paperwork gets signed off. So now we're down to eleven point three, but I don't wanna.
No, that doesn't count that, Commissioner.
It doesn't count that at all?
No, no.
Okay, so.
The eleven point eight is general fund.
Okay.
The road and bridge was an additional eight million deficit.
Mm-hmm.
So when, you can't, you can't combine, you.
We're behind.
The half a million has nothing to do with the general fund budget.
That's fair, sir.
Um, the last motion I have is five point seven zero nine eight, point three four two seven.
Was there a second to that?
Not yet. I'm saying it's the last motion I had on the floor. So we need to do, somebody needs to do something.
I guess, I guess nobody's seconding that, right?
Nobody's seconding it.
Okay, I'd like to make ano- another motion. I'd like to move five point six six nine oh with an operating millage rate of three point four two seven.
Five point six nine oh?
Five point six six nine oh with point three four two seven.
That's the same we made before?
That's correct.
Okay, folks, getting late. I need to have a motion that we can all vote on. Let's get together and.
Are you gonna ask for a second on my motion?
Is there a second in the motion? Second, second dies for lack of a second.
Okay.
Folks, let's get serious about this, please. We may not all agree, we've gotta come up with something.
Mayor, can I ask the Vice Mayor to restate her, um, her math? Uh, I, I know that.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
What, what, with, when, when you had made the proposal, okay, on that number, now we're, now we're eight hundred thousand.
Yeah, we're beyond that.
Beyond that. Um.
How did I get to that number?
Yes.
If you look back at my notes, I took the, um, five point six six nine oh. And added the zero point three four two seven for the debt service. Cause I wanted to show, um, you know, that that was an actual decrease in number, which brought me then to six point zero one one seven.
Six point.
Showing a difference between that, that number, six point zero one one seven. And the proposed number that we have here of the six point one six nine oh was a difference of point one five seven three. Which Ms. Chung said amounted to two and a half, two point six million? Is that still correct?
Yes, that's an additional two point six.
The point one five seven three. That's how I got to that number.
And Vice Mayor, do you? There are some assumptions, and I think we've sat together long enough to see historically where the numbers have come in. Um. Do you anticipate a shortfall or a break even if we go with this?
Who has one of that, the city manager? City Manager? Is it like the shortfall or break even?
I'm not, I'm not certain, I understand what the question is.
There's, there's a two point six, uh, million dollar reduction in potential, um, revenue with Vice Mayor's, um.
Then that would leave us about a little nine point two million shy, correct? The two point six from the eleven point eight? My math correct this time?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're so shy about nine million.
And, oh man, um. Ms. Chung, uh, thank you, Mayor, for, for giving me the floor. Ms. Chung, the state revenues that typically come in.
Yes.
The last three years.
Wow.
The last three years, where, where are we, where are we coming in at? We coming at five million, six million, seven million?
Um, from my recollection, no, we don't have those high numbers. We're, we've tended to be pretty close, I think, um, in terms of what we've estimated for the state. I wanna say it could swing maybe a million.
Okay, what are you estimating the state's gonna bring in for us?
In the general fund, um, our state shared revenues are about nineteen, nineteen point something, almost twenty million dollars.
Okay, uh, let's, let's talk from that, not gross, okay?
Yeah, no.
That is net.
That's the amount.
I, I understand, well, the manager's saying that we have a deficit.
Yes.
Yeah? Okay. If the state delivers on what you are assuming historically that they will do.
Yes.
I'll ask you the question, are we short or are we even?
No, that's already estimated in the budget.
Currently, we're estimating state revenues twenty million dollars. Now, the state could come back and they could be lower than what we're estimating, or they could be higher. The swing has not been, um, five million dollars. It's probably closer to maybe a five hundred thousand to a million.
Usually staff's estimate has been very close to what the state says.
So, Mr. Dodge.
Sometimes it's coming a little more, sometimes it's a little less.
So, Mr. Dodge, you're anticipating eleven point eight million dollar worst case scenario?
Yes, eleven point eight is the actual, uh, budget numbers that we have as expenditures based upon, uh, the revenues are eleven point eight less.
Well, let me ask you a question while you're, while you're doing it. Why can't we just have an advertise rate, even though we know we're not gonna set that rate?
That, that was the point, Mayor, of our motion, was simply to do advertise and.
Well, I, I think that clears.
Come August, you would have a much better idea of what you wanna do through workshop. And then in September, first reading, you said it.
And at one point, there's no guessing, let's set an advertise rate and then work with it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, uh, going back to our visioning, our, our budget visioning meeting that, that we had. Um, I keep, keeps rolling through my head that there were a significant number of projects that were discussed in that, you know, in that, in that meeting. Um. Some seem to have a little more, you know, value to, to everyone wanting them, you know, than some others. There was some prioritizing that kind of was pretty evident through the, through the discussion, um, that we had that, that we had that night. Um. And the, the majority of, the majority of them, if I remember correctly, were not, uh, not, say, parts of the city specific. They were more general for the entire city projects that would be benefiting the entire city. So, I, I guess, I guess, City Manager, you were obviously at that meeting, you were, you were chairing that meeting, if you will. If in fact, if in fact, what, what we're saying tonight is, is that if we. If we vote to stay right where we are on, on millage and then the, the added in debt, debt service on that. What, going back to that meeting, what would you? What would you, I mean, we look to you for that kind of leadership and answers. What would you be saying would ha- would have to come off the table? I mean, what of those items that were there, and some were pretty significant, were, you know, in, major improvements for the entire city?
Mr. Mayor?
What, what would you say?
The city manager.
Uh, what I could do is provide to the commission, you'd have an opportunity to look at it over the summer. I could give you a listing in the general fund only of all the capital items, and you would know it by department. Uh. And then, uh, there could be some operating funds which, uh, commission directed us to add into the budget. And we'd provide you with a list of those, and then you can make a decision at that time, uh, after we know the true count of the revenues, to decide what is that you'd wanna put off.
I think that's a good idea.
You can, you can capitalize the items, but the only ones you can do through, um, a, a, a revenue issue would be capitalized. But you have to remember, normally, you only borrow, uh, on a revenue issue, items that have a lifespan at least twenty years. So you wouldn't finance vehicles, you wouldn't finance a fire truck.
Right.
Uh, however, if you, if you had in the budget of building, certainly you could do that. But then you have to remember, you will have that expenditure every year for the next twenty years.
Right.
Uh, even though you might not have the full amount of it by doing it as pay as you go, but you will have that exposure. So we could look at that as an option. The one option that I believe, uh, does have a possibility for that, which is in the road and bridge fund. Whereby perhaps we could do, uh, some things. One example would be, how much does a half a million generate, uh, in a loan? Because you, you wanna make certain that, once again, whatever that capital item is, it has at least a lifespan of twenty years.
Right.
We can provide you with all those options. The only, the only thing we placed before you this evening was not to raise taxes, was simply to advertise it, to give you that flexibility.
Right, I, and I, you know, Mr. Dodge, I, I understand that, and, and I hear where you're coming from. But, you know, this is, you could play back every single year, this date, when we were sitting here doing this. And you're gonna hear the same thing that we've been hearing every single year is, let's not raise, let's raise, let's raise a few pennies, let's not raise a few pennies. What do we have to maybe not do that we wanted to do? So I, I guess a little bit of frustration on, on my part is no, is knowing that that has been the scenario. Every year for as long as I can remember, that we don't already have from you or from staff, those options that would say, you know, if we, if we don't take this recommend, you know, this. What you're recommending, this six point one six nine oh gives us this eleven and a half million or this eight million. And based upon what happened at our visioning, this is what may, this is the cost of this project and may have to be, uh, uh, taken off the, taken off the table. So I, I guess that's, that's a bit of my frustration now, is that we, that we, we weren't given some of that in order to, to be able to even say, well, you know, I, I like Project A, and it's gonna be X number of dollars.
Well, we're here tonight, we have to make.
Well, we aren't, Mayor, but we are, you're right. You're right.
Ma- Mayor, can you, can you, um, refresh, remember, perhaps the city attorney can? Um, regardless of what is on the trim notice, there's a requirement of either having three or four, uh, affirmative votes in budget. Um, so if there was the city manager's recommendation to be fully advertised, how many commissioners would have to support that in order for it to go through in September?
Three, three, three.
It would only require.
Just for advertising purposes, cuz you're not studying.
Not, not tonight? I'm saying that if, if what you're proposing, City Manager.
Well, I wouldn't expect, but if, if theoretically, it would probably be four votes.
It would require four because of the percentage of increase, am I correct, City Attorney?
It's five, you know.
I would say five votes, so you'd have to have.
It would have to be five.
Yeah.
Right.
To do what?
It has to be five. If, if.
September.
If we were to advertise, see that, I'm trying to move this along here, Mayor.
Appreciate it.
Okay, because certainly. Based on this discussion, I think the residents can see that you're not gonna get five votes to support this advertise rate that the city administration is recommending. That's all but guaranteed. So the next question is, City Attorney, when does it become four and when does it become three?
Mayor, respond, Mayor, please. To get past tonight, you need a majority vote to get the ten or the million.
Understood, I'm not, we're gonna.
And that's a legal, legal fact.
It's September, cuz there's a lot of time between now and September, and people kinda forget who does what. It's gonna take five votes, a unanimous vote in September for what the city administration is proposing to go through, and I don't see that happening. So the next step is, when does it become four votes and when does it become three votes in September?
Lisa has that information, yes?
I do, um, so the current millage rate that we have right now, with no changes, would require four votes.
So even if we left it absolutely flat, it still requires eighty percent approval of the city commission.
Requires how many, four?
Four, four votes.
The current.
Even if we leave it flat. So we have, we have the city ma- administration side that requires five, and we have the opposite end which requires. So, we have, we have the city ma, administration side that requires five, and we have the opposite end which requires four. And we can't even get a second on one of them.
Point of order? Point of order, Commissioner Castillo?
I believe, I believe that, uh, a reduction in the aggregate millage rate only requires three final votes. Correct, City, City Attorney?
It, it depends upon the, 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 what the number requires. It could, it could be, but I think that Lisa can give you the direct answer.
So, if we were to pass, if we were to pass last year's, uh, uh, millage rate and, and a reduction in the capital, that would only require three votes.
If that was the number, Lisa...
Not just tonight, but in...
In the future.
In the future as well. So, I just wanted to make that clarification.
Is that the rollback rate, uh, is that the rollback rate, City Attorney?
No, that's not the rollback.
No, that's not the rollback. So, the rollback would even be...
Be even worse.
Would be more difficult.
It would be even worse. Okay. So... Five of us aren't gonna agree to city administration. And we can even put it in the minutes, that we're not gonna do that. Okay? But for advertising purposes, and to give the administration the, uh, the ability to, uh, because I'm certainly not voting for the, for the advertise in September. I'm on record, I'm not supporting the advertise. I don't care what Facebook says, I'm not supporting it. So, uh, Mayor, I'll move, uh, I'll move the recommended trim notice by the city administration.
I'm sorry?
I'll, I'll move the recommendation as published in our agenda.
Is there a second?
For advertising purposes only.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second?
Good, okay. So, I'll make another motion. I want, I want to keep making a motion. I want, I want to shave, I want to shave point zero zero one off of each time down. And we can be here till, we have to stop at eleven thirty and then extend, but I will continue to make a motion until we get to a point that we can actually run the city. So, um, I'll let staff do the, uh, uh, do the math for me, because they've got quicker calculators than me. So, we're certainly not getting the top, the, the top dog tonight, so now we have to come down. And we'll just go at point zero zero one, and we'll keep going. And I'll go point zero zero two and zero zero three until we get to a spot. Unless someone else wants to make a recommendation that we can get three out the door.
I, I have a recommendation.
Go ahead.
I move five point six six nine oh and point three four two seven, because that's where we can agree.
We can't agree, you can't even get a second.
We're eleven point eight million dollars in the hole with that.
I don't believe that's true, Commissioner. And if you give me an opportunity, I'll explain it to you.
Please do.
Okay. I've been here twenty years. Mr. Dodge, how much did you roll over from last year into this budget? About eight million, right? And you're getting ready to roll over about eleven million into next year. You know I know that, because I read the finances of this city.
But the rollover has nothing to do...
I'm talking about unencore, I'm talking about unencore, uh, unencumbered rollover. Surplus, budget surplus, year to year. What has it been? About somewhere between, it has ranged somewhere between three million on a bad year to ten million on a good year. I know that because I read your fi, uh, your financial reports. So, I understand that you want that, that comfort, that blanket. But it means that we have to send a, send a message throughout this entire city that there's a potential increase in taxation. And our folks are sick and tired of being, of being, feel, feeling threatened by that.
Well, why would we have to tell them that?
Because that's what a trim notice is.
No, a trim notice, if you advertise it, it's just an advertise.
No, but they feel, they feel, they feel...
Don't, don't say that it's fact, they may feel that. It's up to us to say it's an advertise rate.
No, it, it, it is an advertise rate, but it is not truth in millage if what you're doing is, is raising it because maybe you may need the money. That's not truth in millage. Truth in millage is you come up with a number, that's what trim means, by the way, truth in millage. Uh, truth in millage means you get your act together before you, uh, sit down and figure it out. And, and then you come up with, uh, 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 an advertise rate that you really want to, uh, to promote, not something just in case we need a couple of more bucks. What the hell is that?
Mr. Mayor?
And we've been through this for twenty years, and it's the same thing. And you know what? I keep making these motions, and somehow this city keeps moving forward. And somehow the cops and firefighters get their raises, and everything seems to work.
Commissioner, uh, Manager, what did you have?
Yeah, I, I...
We go through this every...
The, the problem is with the law, Mayor. Uh, the issue is, the law, the, the state doesn't give us the numbers and time. However, they have set the rules for when you have to set this notice, and it goes to the property appraiser for advertising. So, we're always behind the eight ball on that. And in, and in years past, we had a better handle, but we've had some significant increases due to COVID, uh, due to the cost of living increases that not only affect us and when we go shopping, but it affects our employees. And this commission has granted those increases to employees that have had the impact on wages, that have had the impact on, uh, the, uh, multipliers that what you have to contribute for pension and everything else. Uh, just alone in the police and fire, uh, plan, it was an additional two and a half million dollars of and beyond what we have to pay. So, we've had these increases and, and the increases in expenses that we've had to incur. All I'm telling you at this point, our projected revenues are eleven point eight million less than what we have placed in the budget as far as expenditures. And you can bridge that gap by going back and looking at your expenditures and cutting them.
Point of clarification.
But we can't do that, we can't do that this evening. So, you have to make a decision. If it's your desire to leave the millage at as is, just remember, we have a significant amount of reduction in expenditures we have to make. And if that's the desire of the commission, then we'll have to do so.
Let me ask...
But there will be, there will be some significant...
Let me ask, let me ask this. Commissioner Good, could you shave your numbers?
I'm making a point of clarification.
Commissioner Good, could you shave your numbers?
When you say shave?
Well, you've got five point seven zero nine eight point three four two seven. You couldn't get a second. You take a shave, you know, we're all looking for, you know, what we can agree on. So, I'm asking you, can you shave your numbers, maybe you get an agreement?
I can't shave it much.
Mr. City, Mr. City Attorney, uh, you've got a member of this board making a parliamentary point, and he's not being acknowledged by the chair.
Do you think you can?
Mr. Mayor?
Hold on, City Attorney, I'm asking a question. So, do you think you could?
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I, um, I opened up my statement a little bit by telling you, or telling everyone here what my range was.
Right.
And so, I, I gave my low range, the low end. Um, I, I can agree to, um, the higher range, which would be five point eight eight seven six with a point three four two seven debt service.
All right, hold on a second. Hold on a second. Manager?
The total would be exactly the aggregate of two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen.
Anybody have a problem with that figure?
Point two three.
Point of clarification.
Yeah, hold on a second, I'm trying to get some movement here. Uh, you had a question?
No, no.
Okay. So, does everybody agree so far? All right. Point of clarification, Commissioner Good. Commissioner, uh...
Castillo. It's Castillo.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take that as a motion. Five point eight eight seven six and point three four two seven. I'm gonna second the motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Two, two points. Commissioner Castillo has a motion for clarification, which, which...
I, I went to it.
I understand, but the second aspect is that you can't assume a motion, the action have a motion.
Is that...
We can't assume that a motion's made. Is there a motion by Commissioner Good to do that?
There is, and I'm seconding it.
For the record, thank you, Mayor. Just to be clear.
All right. Discussion on the motion.
I have a point of clarification.
I, I, you already said it four times. Go ahead. I, I, I said, go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Manager, you indicated that there was, uh, two point three million dollars at the visioning that had to go into the pension fund to prop that up?
I believe that was the amount.
Okay. And you, and you told us that you had that amount, we didn't have to tax for it. So, how is that part of your deficit?
Well, wha, wha, wait a minute. What do you mean you don't have to tax for it?
You told me that you had that amount.
Commissioner, give me your answers.
I, I don't believe I answered it that way.
I don't know how else to take it. I asked you, do we, do we have to raise millage for that two point three? And you said, no, we haven't.
City Manager, please give your answer without being...
I, I, I don't believe I understand Commissioner Castillo's comment.
So, he understands.
What I just said, that we recently, and maybe Mr. Austin can help me make sure it's correct, uh, due to the reevaluation, uh, based upon earnings in the pension plan, there's an additional contribution that the city has to make that will eventually have to be budgeted.
We, we all agree with that, but you said you had that money. I asked you, do we have to tax more for it? You said, no, we already have the two point three. I specifically asked that question.
When was that?
City Manager, divisioning.
I don't recall that.
How could you not remember?
I don't, Commissioner, remember that.
All right, you got your answer. Mr. Uh, did you what? The record then?
I don't, the, for next year's budget, there's about two million dollar increase in the pension contribution.
Okay.
Mostly a lot due to the investment return.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Quick question for the City Attorney. How many votes will be required to get through?
Let's see how many we get.
Not, not tonight. In September, six point two three oh three.
I would turn to the, to be clear, if I can, to the Commissioner. The answer is for tonight, it's a majority, but this number, if you calculate it out, I'll have to turn to the, to Lisa to get an answer, it's probably gonna require at least three, maybe four votes.
Well, it's, it's gonna require four votes.
Yes, sir.
Four votes for, for approval.
Yes.
In September.
All right?
Mayor, I have a question?
Uh, on the motion?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir, on the mo, the motion, um, my colleague Tom, uh, Tom Good made the motion at five point eight eight seven six and point three four two seven.
Direct to the motion, man. I second it.
That was the motion?
Yes, I got, I wrote it down, and I seconded it.
Okay. So, when you add those together, they're six point two three oh three.
Six point two three oh three is here.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
Right? So, that's higher than what we're, what's in our booklet, you're six point one six nine oh.
All right? Further questions?
Eight eight. That's higher than... That's higher than his original, that's higher than his original motion.
It's higher than what's in our book, the recommendation, six point one six nine oh.
No.
Uh, what's in our book is six point five...
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
What's in our book right now for recommendation is six point five one one seven.
So, this is less.
So, this is lower.
No, what's in my, I'm reading in my book.
Okay, but in my book, so, so we're not...
That's where we're going, by the way.
Six point one six nine oh. Huh?
Almost a half a million.
Yeah, I know. I know, that's what I'm saying.
If you add in the three point four two seven.
Okay, but wait a minute, folks. The motion that was just made by my colleague was five point eight eight seven six and point three four two seven, which is six point two three oh three.
Right, which is the top line.
I'm sorry?
The top line, twenty fourteen fifty.
Right. I, I, I understand that, but what I'm saying...
What's in the book is six point five.
It's, that is a higher number than what is in our booklet as, uh, i, item number four recommended for the trim notice is six point one six nine oh.
Plus add the, then you have to add, you have to add the debt service of point...
Right, right, but we're still...
Point three four, so, you're at six point five one, so, this is a lower number.
Right. No, exactly, but that's, that's what I'm trying to verify, that these are, this is the, this is the correct number that he's got, six point two three oh three.
Six point two three oh three, yes.
All right. Let's see where we go. City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Good?
Yes?
Mayor Ordis.
Me. I seconded Mayor Ordis.
You're on.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes?
Commissioner Schwartz?
No.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
No.
Commissioner Castillo?
No. Mayor, I have a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to move five point six six nine oh and point three four two seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Good? Discussion.
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh, what would the deficit, proposed deficit be with those numbers?
That's still the eleven point eight million. That's still...
All right? Everybody's okay? Call a roll.
I'm sorry, what are we voting on?
Five point six six nine oh and three point four two seven.
Oh, we did get a second on that.
Twelve million dollar deficit.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes?
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
No.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
No.
Mayor Ordis?
No. Need a motion, folks. Or we wait till September?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Commissioner Castillo.
I'll move five point six six nine oh and point three four two seven.
Is there a second? Second? Second dies lack of second. Let me ask a question. Manager, if we wait till September, what are, what are we doing?
Uh, Mayor, you can't, you...
Obviously, we're gonna have pajamas on.
No, you cannot wait till September. You're required by law to provide the information.
Tonight.
Okay, so, what would you recommend, since we can't come up with an agreement, that would be a good figure for us to look at?
Actually, I...
He likes his own.
What's that?
He likes his own. His own motion.
Uh, we need to get somewhere, and I think at least, uh...
Mr. Dodge, before you say...
May, may I ask a question? Lisa, can you come here?
Yeah. Let's not talk among each other, please.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Um, in a spirit trying to compromise and do the best we can, I would, I would, uh, recommend, uh, Commissioner Good's, uh, motion of the five point eight eight seven six with a debt service that's established by law. We have no choice.
All right, let's try that again.
Point three four two seven.
Commissioner Good, would you like to make that motion?
So, move.
Second?
State for the record, the numbers for the clerk.
Five point eight eight seven six, point three four two seven. And the mayor's gonna second. Discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
City Manager Dodge or City Attorney? Uh, we have to transmit, um, a...
Notice.
We have to tran, we have to transmit a number to the property appraiser. Uh, what is the date? Because I know that there are cities who do meet in July, and they do their trim advertising in July. So, do you know, uh, if Ms. Chung knows, what is the absolute last day that we can transmit a number to the property appraiser?
August second.
August second.
Isn't that correct?
So, follow me here, Mayor. City Manager Dodge?
August fourth.
August the fourth.
August fourth.
Oh, I'm s, August the fourth?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, our meeting is August the second.
Correct. Right, which is two days before the deadline.
Yeah, we can have the same repeat of this, um.
So, two days before the deadline, but by, but maybe by then, Mr. Dodge, maybe by then, we'll actually have state numbers. So, while this is highly unusual, mayor, um, we do have a motion on the floor, so I, I can provide a substitute motion.
Go ahead.
To defer the advertising until the August second meeting.
Is there a second? Second by the vice mayor? Discussion?
That's on the line.
Call a roll, please, on the substitute motion.
On the deferral till August the second, correct, for this item.
For this item, allow the manager the opportunity to get the state numbers.
Thank you, mayor. You gonna call the roll?
Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
No.
Commissioner Good?
No.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes. Do we need four votes?
Need three votes.
Three, good, we.
Thank you, mayor.
Alright, thank you all for good discussion. Uh, let's go to item thirty nine, please.
Mayor, for the record, number thirty nine is a discussion of hostile action to appoint two, that's two numerical, two members to the police and fire pension board for a two-year term, expiring on twenty twenty five.
Mayor, I have a suggestion.
Go ahead, the vice mayor, I heard ya.
Thank you. Um, having, having years ago, um, been, you know, be, before I was elected and just being, you know, active in, in the community, I sat, not in this building, it was in the old, the old building, um, to be appointed to, 'cause they did it all at one time, where we appointed to, um, city, the city, the city boards. And, um, the way it was done back then was, the, the dais would be here and the board number would come up, the name of the board would come up, and then they would call out names, like, this is my appointee and this is my appointee, and, and so that, that happened, and it's kinda like, was kinda like the, the game, you know, in the, in the schoolyard, the, the last kid that gets picked for the baseball team or, or whatever. And I just always had a, a, a lot of folks that thought that that was kind of a rough way, hard way to, to, to do it. I mean, here you have folks that are coming out to volunteer their time to the cities, not paid positions, it's not anything, it's volunteering, and those last ones that get chosen kinda felt like they didn't have much value to the, to the city, I don't know how, it just kind of hurts, a lot of hurts, like hurts, hurt feelings. So what I would, what I would ask, mayor, is, um, I believe that tonight we have, um, we have two positions that need to be filled.
Correct.
And so, um, I would ask, mayor, if you would consider that instead of calling out names and doing something like that, where again, these are volunteers, that we might, uh, uh, consider each one of us writing down our two, our two choices, give them to the city clerk and let her count, and the top two get the position.
I don't have a problem with that, if somebody else.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would, I would, I'll go ahead to you.
If you will, Mr. Mayor, the, although Commissioner, the Vice Mayor Seifel's option is certainly thoughtful, um, to the extent that you were to commit to a vote on the record, it must be, you'd have, if you did this by, on a paper ballot kinda thing, you have to put your initials of your name on it, for the purpose, it's a public record, you have an obligation, public voting, there's no privacy, there's no.
Mayor?
Mayor.
Just trying to keep someone from being the last one chosen to play ball.
Mayor, mayor.
Commissioner Schwartz?
I, I am, I, I am already set on who I wanna support, I wanna support the, the two most well-qualified individuals on the board, and, um, certainly, uh, Chairman Moran, first of all, um, served our community as a detective, and now he's retired, and I wish him well in retirement, but we certainly cannot lose his leadership and his knowledge on this board, and we can, I can certainly say the same for Jack McCluskey, who has, um, who has worked extremely hard ensuring that we don't have these multimillion-dollar gaps that we have to plug every June. So, uh, as much as I appreciate, um, Vice Mayor Seifel's recommendation, um, I, I move that we appoint, uh, Tom Moran and Jack McCluskey to the, uh, to the board.
Is there a second? 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 Motion, guys.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
You all will recall agreeing with my request that we, um, asked the, uh, city auditor to produce a report, uh, showing how well we were doing, uh, compared to some other listing of cities. I wanted to benchmark, uh, this because we're talking about well over a hundred million dollars in invested funds here, very, very significant thing, uh, that, uh, men and women who work an entire career need in order to live in retirement, and, uh, the city manager has put us on notice that, um, there are financial concerns with the police and fire fund in Pembroke Pines. I only today saw a copy of that report, and I have not had a chance to discuss it either with staff or with the auditor, and I feel that before, uh, I engage in making appointments, I wanna understand what the presenting problem is. That, that's a, that's a fine stroke that in my mind comes down the road. So, I would encourage all of you to do the same thing, I believe that we received this report in the email, though I've been asking for it over and over again, today at about one o'clock. I had a chance to eyeball it, but I have not had a chance to study it, I have not had a chance to question the, uh, the auditor about, uh, many questions that it raises, uh, or speak to staff about it. This is a very significant issue for us, one of the biggest funds that we manage, and the people who we select, are the folks who have to vote on how that money is invested. So, I would like for us to defer this, uh, the, this appointment is not of the essence, we can deal with this in August, let's take a couple of months to take a good look at this audit, ask the questions that we need to ask, and then come back and, uh, and select the right, uh, the right representatives.
Okay, is there a second?
Uh, I second that.
Second by Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Discussion?
Sure.
Call a roll, please.
Sure, mayor, I, I'd like to discuss the deferral.
Go ahead.
Um, we have two sitting members who are asking for reappointment. Um, every month, this, this city clerk sends out minutes for everything going on, there are open meetings, any elected official, just like any member of the public, can choose to spend time there, and actually sit down with each individual board member. I, 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 I find the, I found the request to be out of order, um, based on the merits of, um, if you want more information about the report, that has nothing to do with who's sitting on the board. Uh, I see, what I see here, mayor, if, 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 if you can give me a little bit of latitude on, on the deferral part, is I see one applicant who has, um, who has missed more board meetings on another board, I don't know if it's six or seven, applying for this one. And again, we have the chairman, and I think, um, I think I, I think I pointed, um, I think I made the motion to appoint Mr. McCluskey some eight, nine years ago.
Ten.
Point of order, mayor?
Ten years now.
Go ahead, Commissioner Castillo, point and order.
The, the, the discussion before us is very simply a deferral request, it's been seconded, people can talk about the deferral, but we don't need to get involved in other issues. There's a deferral request for the reasons that were, that were mentioned.
And I, and I agree. City clerk, call a roll, please.
Mayor, my question's seconded.
Commissioner Good.
Thank you. Point of clarification, the deferral is because there is information about finances or about?
It's coming up, and when we, when, you, you heard the motion.
No, I, I kind of heard the motion, I want to be clear, the deferral is because we're waiting on additional information.
Or, or, or some have not seen it and wanna look at it. Very simple. Very simple.
Okay.
Go ahead, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
No.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
No.
Mayor Ordis?
No.
Mayor, I'd like to make a, I'd like to request that my colleague remake, uh, I believe he had a motion out there.
What's that?
I believe my colleague had an earlier motion.
So, my, me?
Yes, yes, I am.
Uh, I, I'd like to, uh, reappoint, uh, Tom Moran and Jack McCluskey.
Second.
Is there a second? Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner Good.
Yeah, so I, um, I, um, I'm not gonna support that.
Me neither.
I, um, think that we really need to give serious consideration to, um, the opportunity for others to participate in, in this, uh, board here. This board, uh, this is the appointment for this body, and the intent for our appointment is to have people, um, that are, um, not, um, necessarily familiar with the, the police and fire actions as much as it is that they are aware of the finances that, uh, manage their longevity of life of working here. They shouldn't be thinking anything other than the betterment of that group of folks, uh, and how to, um, make their lives whole, uh, for their lives and for whoever else they choose to carry with them. Mr. Barrero here is a, um, resident, a very involved resident, who has done, uh, he's been on several boards in the city here, and he has shown a loyalty to this city for the betterment of the city. His background is very strong in dealing with banking matters and bond issues and, um, making him very, very qualified to understand the technicalities of the financing of a pension plan. And I think it's important that we start allowing other, uh, residents to participate in, uh, the very important matters that we have before the city here, and I, uh, I fully support Mr. Barrero. Um, I think, I think it's very important that we allow him to have that opportunity. And, uh, you all do have his resume, so you can clearly see what his experience level is.
Hey, it's gonna be one of those, we can't make a decision.
Mayor, I thought we had a motion.
We have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second.
Okay, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
No, I, uh, I cannot vote, and it has nothing to do with them, it has to do with, I need more research in order to cast an intelligent vote, that opportunity has been denied to me uncollegially and I'm voting no.
Commissioner Good?
No.
Mayor Ordis?
I'm gonna vote no, too.
Okay, let me take one at a time.
I'd like to renew my motion, my motion to defer, please, so that I can study it more carefully.
Okay, there's a motion to defer, is there a second, there is, call a roll, please, on the deferral.
On deferral, Mr. Mayor.
What's that?
On the deferral.
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
No, no.
Commissioner Schwartz?
No.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
When's it coming back?
Uh, uh, August.
In August.
August, yeah.
I hear that in the motion.
Listen, uh, the members out there, I apologize, uh, there's some good points made, it doesn't mean anything, so we'll see you in August. Okay, let's go to.
Item forty, Mr. Mayor.
What's that?
Item forty.
Item forty, uh.
Item forty.
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion for, uh, Commissioner, uh, Vice Mayor Seifel to be the voting delegate.
Second.
There's a discussion, are you all in favor, I oppose?
Thank you.
I just have it. Florida League, we just had a great, um, uh, um, county, uh, function, it was really good, so we're, we're looking good, manager?
Mr. Mayor, here's another item.
Where?
Forty one.
Forty one.
No, we're not there?
No, I don't have a forty one.
We're not there yet?
Oh, yeah.
Am I running this meeting?
Getting close.
Well, I thought I was, uh, okay. Manager, do you have a report?
I do.
Yes, uh, Mayor and Commissioner, uh, as you know, uh, I had, um, set a workshop, uh, regarding solid waste. Uh, in the interim, I, uh, we had an opportunity to speak to the county, and they were very gracious, and they've, uh, given us an, an extension so that we, uh, can continue to, uh, dispose of our municipal solid waste until September thirtieth, and, um, and at that time, it's given us a little bit more time, uh, to reevaluate, uh, that five-year, uh, agreement, and we will bring it back to you in August, but we are okay right now till September thirtieth on, on the disposal of our solid waste.
Okay, Mr. Manager?
Yes.
For some time now, you have had a, uh, a plan that's been brewing that you have been, um, not ready to discuss, um, with res, with respect to that matter. I'd like you to know that I will be scheduling a meeting with you, uh, over the next, uh, week or so, so that we can discuss what you have in mind. I don't wanna be held in suspense anymore on, 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 on solid waste, and I'd like to know what you know. So, I will be calling you to have that meeting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Um, mayor, can I ask the city, uh, city, uh, attorney a question?
Go ahead.
We have a charter, three oh nine A and three oh nine B, where we have a, um, we have individual rights to ask any question we want, but the city manager actually runs the city, uh, day-to-day operations, and the city doesn't answer to any individual commissioner. Am I correct, it takes a collegial body for, if, if we wanna get an answer out of the manager, we would actually have to have a motion and a majority to force him to disclose what he's thinking. Am I correct on that?
If you chose to have him support that publicly, but, but the manager has the absolute right, has the commissions to inquire and have conversations directly with the manager.
Okay, but the manager shouldn't be under any threat to answer a question by any individual, by any individual commissioner, you know, um, that's my understanding, I mean, there's been, uh, there's been inquiries about this before in the past, where the manager, uh, doesn't feel comfortable with lying to question.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, absent a, a, a majority of the commission directing that the manager respond in a public forum, the answer is that the manager responds to each of you individually and collectively, but the collegial body makes those decisions, but the manager under the charter, much like myself and others, uh, who are direct reports, uh, can individually converse with commissioners.
Okay, well, while, I don't know.
If they so choose.
Yeah, I don't know if this would be a new business item, but I would make a motion to direct the city manager to, uh, get with individual commissioners as he sees fit on this item, and not be forced to, uh, answer, uh, to any, one individual commissioner until such time that he feels is appropriate.
Is there a second? Second?
Then the charter rules, the manager still has that authority, he doesn't have to answer the question.
Okay, motion, nice, elector second. Alright, uh, city manager, or anything else?
No, mayor.
City attorney?
I do, mayor, the two items, one of which is printed in the agenda, as you have seen over the past several days, we have a proposed mediated settlement agreement that was reached during a full day of mediation last Thursday, in the South Rush Ranchers versus Pembroke Pines matter, without getting into great detail on the record, you'll note for the record that the, um, town will be obligated to pay the sum of seven and twenty-five thousand dollars to the city of Pembroke Pines for attorney's fees arising from the litigation in case number twelve dash two eight eight one nine per ends twenty-five, which has been in the court for probably ten-plus years. Um, the manager and your special counsel, Bruce Johnson, and your city attorney support the, the resolution as proposed to make the city of Pembroke Pines whole, and you'll note also that in paragraph five of that document, that the obligated, uh, requirements are that the city man, town manager and town attorney, um, also support this item before the town council at their next regular meeting to allow for a cash payment within the timeframe set forth in the document, which we support, if you will, by motion this evening.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I, uh, I move that, uh, that we accept the settlement and, uh, move forward with it.
Second.
Discussion, call a roll, please.
Definitely all second, right?
I didn't say.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Of course.
Mayor Ordis?
See.
Thank you all very much, one more thing, mayor and commission, just quickly, I'm not sure that I formally made the request on prior occasions, but we're developing some additional information in the city of Pembroke Pines versus the Con Edison case, as you may remember, I'm gonna request this evening a shave meeting for sometime in December, uh, December, hopefully in August, in August, to, uh, seek your guidance and your advice, along with Mr. Springhardt, who is your outside special counsel from Orlando, to actually physically have him here to discuss some of the pending issues that I cannot discuss on the record this evening, but if you will by motion, direct it yourselves and us, conclude to.
Without objection.
Thank you. Thank you.
Without objection. Okay, uh.
Thank you all.
Vice Mayor, you wanna take the, the?
Yeah, Mayor Ordis, go ahead.
I'm gonna major motion nominate Vice Mayor Seifel to represent the city of Pembroke Pines and the Florida League of Cities, Florida Municipal Investment Trust.
Second.
Second? Any comments, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Which one's that?
Forty one, Mr. Dodge.
Well, he, that's not.
Forty one. Item forty one.
I think he read forty-two, though.
No.
No, forty one.
Oh.
Are you okay?
Oh.
Are you okay?
No, I guess not. I thought you said the municipal trust fund. I'm sorry.
City Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Item forty-two, Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have a follow-up question with that item.
What's that?
I, I'm meant to ask before you took the vote, but we were in the middle of the vote, so this is just the nominating-
I'm sorry, I can't, let me just-
This is, this is just to nominate Vice Mayor to the League, and then the League still has another selection process?
No, they, they, no, they have, you have to have it from your city. And then they appoint.
Okay. So every city has a member?
Mayor's been doing it for decades.
Not every city?
There's five members in it.
Right.
Yes, the mighty.
So you get to, you get, that's good, okay. Thank you.
All right, so Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes, Vice Mayor will do the twerks. Okay. Discussion and possible action to direct the city attorney's office to draft an ordinance in accordance with section three eleven D of the city charter establishing a process to fill all citywide vacancies on the city commission, such that the process shall include, but not necessarily limited to, public advertising the vacancy, providing a timeframe for instance to individuals to submit applications and public, public interviews and consideration of applicants by the city commission. Colleagues, what I'm looking for, and, and, and that will be my motion.
Let's run this a second. Is there a second?
It's not required to be a second, I have not made the motion yet, sir.
You just made it, you just read it.
No, I said that, that will be after my, after my comment.
Go ahead, it's getting a little late, let's, let's-
I'm sure it is. So Commissioner Good, in two thousand seventeen, that process was just handled completely inappropriate the way that, that appointment was filled. And then in twenty, there were no public interviews. And if there is going to be a vacancy at some future point on this commission, and I think at some future point there will be a vacancy for a plethora of different reasons, there needs to be a public interview process, there needs to be a, a application process and a procedure in order to make sure that the public is engaged, that we are not going to disenfranchise some people and including the public as far as weighing in on what they think about applicants. So my motion would be to direct the city attorney to, I, I, help me, city attorney, to amend three eleven D to allow a public process as a part of the application. Our charter is our charter and there's that stuff, but when there's an actual vacancy outside of what is stated in the charter, we need to have a process and it can't be off the cuff. My biggest concern is when there's a vacancy, we're short members. And when we're down to four or we're down to three, it becomes a problem. And we've seen cities all over Broward County who just cannot get the job done because they can't agree to a process. I want to avoid that. There's five of us here, there's absolutely no reason why we cannot formalize a process so that the public knows what that process will be and the rules aren't changed later down the road when a vacancy actually occurs. I want to get it down ahead of time.
Mayor have a comment?
Is there a second?
I'm not going to second, I need a comment.
Go ahead.
Okay, while, while some of what, what my colleague just stated, I, I agree with. However, however, what I really want to speak to more is the real inequity of how our charter is set up. What happens, all that has happened many times. For example, if you are on the cycle, the, the voting cycle that District Two, District Three, and the mayor's seat are on, when we hope to run for another office other than to be reelected to our current office, we either lose, we either win, and if we lose, we're out, we're done.
Point of order, Mayor?
No.
Point of order, go ahead.
That's not the subject that's being discussed.
All right, Vice Mayor, go ahead, keep going.
So the inequity part of that is, that doesn't happen for District One or District Four, as we have seen happen many times over the last few years. They, those seats can run for another office, they do have to, they do have to follow the law, which says they have to do the resign to run with an effective date of whatever they choose, but by law, they can choose the very, the very last part, the latest that they could be, would be if they were sworn into office for the seat that they would have won that seat. The inequity on that part of it is that those two districts, and I'm, and I'm not pulling out any of my colleagues, I'm just talking in general how it is unfair and, and not equitable to all of the residents of the city to be able to have a say-so in what happens in their, in their district, who they would vote for when in fact, three of us have to-
There's a motion on the floor.
I'm sorry, Mayor, but this is very important because this goes to all of it.
There's a motion under floor.
Not relevant to the motion.
Well.
Go ahead.
So I, what I want to bring out on this is that there is this inequity in our charter and it should be looked at because it is not treating every, every district fairly, it's not treating the mayor's races fairly, the citywide races fairly, and, you know, it would be pretty easy to just say, I'll just file my papers because it doesn't really matter, I'll just run back again. Well, that's not what, that's not what someone who's running for office should feel comfortable saying or have that attitude about that. No, you run for an office because you think that you can do a good job in that office.
What do you want us to do?
We're, we're, we're way off target.
We're not, we're absolutely not off target. We're absolutely not off target because all of this is talking about filling positions and I'm talking about other ways of filling positions as well. So we're not off target. What I'm saying is that there is a problem in the way our charter is set up, in fact, that there are districts that get-
Vice Mayor?
Preferential, it's not really even the right word. They get, but they get opportunities that other districts do not have.
If you feel that way, make a motion when it's-
Send it to the charter board.
Well, I have, I have sent, I have sent to the charter review board because that's where it needs to happen. But what I'm saying is that our residents don't, for the majority, don't understand that that is what happens and how, how it, how it is unfair in our charter and it is inequitable to certain districts and that should never be.
Vice Mayor, my, my, my motion, that I'm hoping to get a second on.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies, let her say.
Wait.
Anything else?
So there's no second for, for a vacancy?
I, I would like for you to, Mayor, if I'm going to vote on, on, if I'm going to second this, I would like for him to-
Well, you didn't say you were going to second, you just wanted to have a discussion.
That's, that's-
Mayor, can I speak to the motion?
He's asking about, he's asking about, you're asking about, am I going to second it?
I'm not asking you to second, I said there was no motion for a second.
Right, I'm sorry, you didn't say that, you said there was no motion. What I'm saying is I would like for, because I may want to second this, but I would like for my colleague, because he changed a little bit of language, I'd like him to explain it a little more.
Yeah, yes, so, thank you, okay.
Go ahead.
I'm asking the city attorney to either amend three one one or bring forward an ordinance that would allow, under three one one, to allow the commission to have an adopted vacancy procedure for commission seats that become vacant for appointment purposes only. Our charter speaks to, our charter already speaks to and addresses movement, God forbid, there is a vacancy-
Please answer.
It, it, with, there's a vacancy with respect to a mayor's seat and, and the Vice Mayor moves up, as we know, with Ben Formodino, the Vice Mayor designate moves over, but there's still a gap. We don't have a procedure for an appointment, not, we have a hundred and eighty days, special election or inside of a hundred and eighty days, but what we don't have is a procedure to appoint folks for that temporary spot.
Okay, Vice Mayor, is that clear?
Yeah, I, I can't support that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Dies a light for a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just to clarify for Commissioner Schwartz, for the record, if I can, under section three point eleven of the city charter, the subsection D tells us that filling of vacancies unless otherwise provided by law, if a vacancy occurs on the city commission, the remaining members of the city commission may by a majority vote, appoint a qualified individual to fill the vacancy on an interim basis. The city commission shall adopt a resolution setting forth the process of appointing an interim member of the city commission pursuant to the section. Commissioner Schwartz spoke to a resolution.
Procedure.
If, if you will, if the commission were to direct us to draft an ordinance, that would be fine, it would simply be a stronger document, so to speak. Doesn't amend the charter, it just simply provides by ordinance a process and procedure. The charter can only be amended by referendum.
What, what I, what I, Mayor, and give me just one minute, what I was trying to avoid was the following. In September or October, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Good, of two thousand seventeen, there was a motion to appoint Ishmael Monroy to the dais. There weren't any public interviews and it just happened. Then in two thousand twenty, we, four of us, agreed to a process of applicants and interviews. I was anticipating that we would have public dialogue, that didn't occur. And I'll be honest, the residents, they don't like appointments, but if appointment, we have a legal right to do it, it, I feel strongly it should be absolutely transparent with the individual being interviewed at the microphone. And that's all I was trying to get done.
Good point. All right.
That, that's all it was.
Don't forget July fourth, Fourth of July, we've got a big celebration, right? Christina?
We're done?
We're done. Right.
Good night, everybody. I got to leave early in the morning.
Where are you going?
Going to go visit my daughter.
You what? A January leaving? Well, you know, I wish I had. You should have marred and placed some things in there.